Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Sandra Merman. Representing District Two, Victor Christ. Representing District Three, Les Miller. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing Countywide District Five, Ken Hagan. Representing Countywide District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing Countywide District Seven, Al Higginbotham. The county administrator is Mike Merrill. The county attorney is Chip Fletcher. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning, everyone. It's Wednesday, April 4th. I want to welcome all of you to our Board of County Commissioners meeting. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation from our Chaplain, Commissioner Stacy White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Heavenly Father, we pray that you will guide this board and our staff and stakeholders today as we make decisions that are important for this county. And we pray that those decisions will be good decisions that are indicative of good government. We thank you for retired Sheriff David G., who's here today to be recognized for his many years of exemplifying what good government is all about. We thank you not only for those law enforcement officers that are here in the room today to support Sheriff G., but we thank you for all of our law enforcement officers and first responders and also our members of our armed forces. We pray as always that you will guide them, comfort them, and deliver them home safely. We ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name.
Thank you, Commissioner White, for that wonderful prayer. We have five great presentations today. We're going to begin with a special presentation of the 2018 Ellsworth G. Simmons Good Government Award. And this is a very special award for both the Board of County Commissioners and the people of Hillsborough County. It's our pleasure to present the 2018 Ellsworth G. Simmons Good Government Award. And Commissioner Miller will tell us a little bit about the history behind this award.
Good morning. The Board of County Commissioners established the Ellsworth G. Simmons Good Government Award in 1996 to honor an individual or group for the significant role that they play in improving government through leadership and vision. Past winners include H. Lee Moffett, Judge E. J. Salcini, Florida Governor Bob Martinez, former Hillsborough County Commissioner Jan Platt. Last year recipient was former County Commissioner Ruben Paget. The Ellsworth G. Simmons Good Government Award is named in honor of respected government and civic leader who served seven years on the Hillsborough County School Board and 21 years on this Board of County Commissioners. Only one that's going to do that is beat him is Commissioner Hagan. Through Mr. Simmons' efforts and involvement in such initiatives at University of South Florida, Tampa National Airport, and the University Community Hospital, he helped transform Hillsborough County. Commissioner White would recognize the Simmons family and other members of the War Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. We are very pleased to have with us this morning members of the Simmons family who serve on the selection committee for this award. Michelle Henry, the late Commissioner's granddaughter, serves every year. Welcome and thank you for being here. We also thank the other committee members who made nominations and recommended the finalists. And they are Committee Chairman Brenda Thrower, Kent Bailey, Patrick Basquet, Ernest Coney Jr., Judith Green, Joe Guidry, and William Mitchell. We appreciate your service on this committee, and I'd like to ask that you all stand at this time so that we can recognize you.
This is a really special day for us, and I am so pleased to announce the recipient of the 2018 Ellsworth G. Simmons Good Government Award, Hillsborough County Sheriff David G., who recently retired. And Sheriff G., I'd love for you to come forward, and please bring your wife Rhonda if you'd like to. Read a little bit about Sheriff G. He was born in Plant City. He's a lifelong resident of Hillsborough County. He has first experience with law enforcement when he became a Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office Explorer at the age of 14. After graduating from Brandon High School, Sheriff G. joined the Sheriff's Office as a community service officer at the age of 18. This opportunity would be the beginning of a long and prosperous career with the agency that would last nearly four decades. He has served in many capacities, including as a homicide investigator, internal affairs supervisor, public information officer, chief financial officer, and chief deputy before being elected sheriff in 2004. He was reelected three times and retired in 2017. During his tenure, Sheriff G. was responsible for managing one of the largest sheriff's offices in the nation, overseeing more than 4,000 employees and an annual budget of more than $405 million. His leadership has helped ensure the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office remains one of the best law enforcement agencies in Florida. Sheriff G.'s efforts to make Hillsborough County a safer place to live, work, and play are countless. He initiated donations of thousands of dollars for the Boys and Girls Clubs in Hillsborough County. He led the Sheriff's Office investment in the Ebor City Historic District with the opening of the 9/11 Memorial and Fallen Heroes Memorial, as well as the new Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office History Center. In addition to his service with Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff G. holds a bachelor's degree in mathematics from the University of Tampa. He is a graduate of the FBI National Academy and the United States Secret Service Dignitary Protection School. He is a law enforcement aviator, rated in fixed wing aircraft and turbine helicopters. Sheriff G. also served the county's youth as a board member of the Kids Place of Tampa Bay and is an active member of the Florida Sheriff's Youth Ranches. He is a former chairman of the Brandon Boys and Girls Club, former board member of the Hillsborough County Head Start Program, and former security consultant to the Office of Commissioner of Major League Baseball. Sheriff G., you have provided tremendous leadership to our community, our state, and our nation over the years. Your service to others is an example to us all and embodies the spirit of the Ellsworth G. Simmons Good Government Award. It is my privilege to present this award to you. Your name has also been added to a perpetual plaque displayed here in county center that lists all 22 Ellsworth G. Simmons Good Government Award winners. We are so grateful for your work and congratulations. And let me uncover this award and present this to you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Those were, that is very nice, and I'm honored to be in such great company of previous recipients of this award. And I want to thank, I see a lot of my former members of my staff that I had the honor of working with many years, and I will tell you, you don't receive an award like this unless you have good people around you. And I always had good people around me. And it was, it was an honor to have served with them. It was an honor to have contributed to this community. And I thank this commission. I worked with most of, most of the people on this commission and with the county administrator, and I appreciate all of the support that I received during my tenure sheriff and, of course, previous to that as a deputy from this county commission, who always made public safety a priority. I appreciate it. I thank you, and my best to all of you.
Thank you. Your service has made a lasting impact. We're not ready yet, I'll let you know, on our community, and we're so proud to honor you today. And I know that the fellow commissioners would like to add some remarks, and of course, our current sheriff Chad Crosster is here. Thank you for attending. We're well protected today. Look at this group. Got a lot of, a lot of stars in the room. So you'd like to call on the commissioners?
Oh, the queue's full. We're going to go ahead and start with Commissioner Al Higginbotham.
Thank you very much. And I just want to say, Sheriff, that it's probably 25, 30 years that I've had the privilege of calling you a friend and my sheriff, and I'm a better person for having associated myself with you and to have known you. And something, as you know, I'm retiring in November, and something that I haven't shared with anyone until today is that upon retirement, I plan to grow a beard and let my hair grow out.
Thank you, Commissioner Christ. Sheriff G., I'll keep this brief. I can have a tendency to go on and on, but, you know, I've really only known you closely for, for a few years, but you really feel like an old friend, and I really just admire your core values, what you stand for, and everything that you've always represented. I will tell just a quick story, and I don't know that I've ever told this one to you before, but years ago, when I was fresh out of pharmacy school, a new pharmacist, I had my first foray into local politics. That, that South County Coalition had gotten to work, and they were working for a guy named David G., who was going to be our, our new sheriff, our next sheriff. So of course, I, you know, got roped into that deal, and they came by to see me. I was, you know, out there finally making a decent paycheck, and they said, Stacy, we need your support for this guy. You know, knowing all those guys as long as I have, there was just no question. I said, okay, who are we supporting? And they told me your name and that we were supporting you. Boy, am I ever glad that, that I got to be a part of that initial support of you. And I know you're going to go look at your financials from your first race and see if I'm telling you the truth, and I absolutely am. And I just really appreciate everything you've done for this county and more specifically for, for law enforcement here in Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Sheriff G. Let me thank you for all that you've done in this county. You and I worked on some very small issues in your office with constituent issues, but the major issue was when we had the incident at the Florida State Fair where a young man was killed. And I called you and told you we had to do something, and I formed a committee, and you came forth and brought forth many of your officers to work on that. We put together a plan, started working with the Florida State Fair Board. You brought in the City of Tampa police officers. We got the, the school board officers. It had to put together a plan that, to make sure that those kind of incidents will not happen again. You put forth so much resources, this county does not realize what you did there. It was a very, very tough issue. You took a lot of heat. They beat you up a lot, but you stood your ground and made sure that those comments didn't hurt you and hurt your staff and continued to work with me in making sure those things wouldn't happen. And the nights of those fairs when we had those officers out there on student night, they, they got mixed up on some heated incidents out there, but they never wavered and did exactly what they had to do. It was all because of you and putting the staff together and working with me on that. And I'll never forget that. And thank you very much for your service and look forward, hope you have a great retirement and enjoy yourself.
Commissioner Hagan.
Thank you. Sheriff, it's been an honor to work with you during your entire time as sheriff, but it's an even bigger honor to call you my friend. Unlike some sheriffs, you did not care about the headlines or the press. You know, public safety was paramount and everything, I mean, it was all about protecting the men and women that worked for you and protecting their neighborhoods and our families. And no one did it better than you. You are the gold standard when it comes to sheriffs. And a special thank you for all the work that you did with our Boys and Girls Clubs. We have a very special partnership with them, and that's, and that's thanks to you. So God bless.
Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. Sheriff G., I have not had an opportunity as a commissioner to work with you, but I would like to thank you, and I was so impressed by all the, your history there. I will tell you, when I was here as an aide to Commissioner Kathy Castor, I have never forgotten something that you did at that time, and I was so impressed. There was some debate over the funding of our Domestic Violence Center that we had, and you took the unusual move of stepping forward to talk about how it should be funded, to offer funding, and to talk about what it did in terms of your job and how it affected your job to kind of get things on the front end. And I just was deeply impressed that you came forward with that, and I've never, ever
I guess I'm the final comment. Sheriff, it's always good to see you. I see that your barber retired as well. Actually, it's quite becoming on you. You know, I've been around a while. I had a chance to, to work with both of your predecessor and his predecessor. And when you were coming up the ranks and it looked like you were going to be sheriff, I asked Malcolm and I asked Cal, you know, tell me about this guy. He's so young. And they said, he'll never let you down. You can put your trust in him as a great law enforcement man. And all the time you served, you fulfilled that duty better than anyone else I had a chance to see in the state. And you and I both know I had to work with every sheriff in this state for 18 years in the legislature, and none of them can hold a candle to you. The work that you did in this county will be your legacy from time on, and people are going to be very grateful. A lot of what you did, most people aren't even unaware. During your tenure as sheriff, Hillsborough County enjoyed one of the lowest crime reductions and one of the largest crime reductions in the history of our state. And I don't think a lot of people know that. And before Jeb Bush left office, he made sure that those crime statistics were available, and it's there. And your community-based policing methodology helped keep peace in our communities when others were, were not at peace. Finally, an area that isn't very sexy and most people don't really address it is our jail. Your outstanding operation of our jail, especially during a tough economic time, was remarkable. When other sheriffs across the state were coming back to their county commission, asking them for more money, you were doing more with less. You're not only an exemplary law enforcement officer, you're an exemplary executive, and we are very grateful for the service that you have provided all of us. Thank you, sir.
And I also want to give my personal thank you to you. We, I worked with you in the legislature to take over child protection services. And as a commissioner and as a state legislator, I can say this man cares so much about our children that it is remarkable. Boys and Girls Club, Child Protection, I mean, we set you off, and we kind of begged you to do it, and I know it was a leap of faith, and maybe today, your, Chad's probably saying, why'd you do that to me? But, but no, it was the best decision to keep our kids safe in the community. And I know, I just thank you from the bottom of my heart, your family, your friends, and you're so deserving of this. And so let's take a picture, and you want, let's bring your award up. You want Rhonda to come with you? We'll go up here. We will now move into the proclamation by Commissioner Ken Hagan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to present the first proclamation this morning, recognizing Crime Victims Rights Week. I'd like to invite up State Attorney Andrew Warren and Andrew Baughman from the Victim My apologies, it's Curtis Baughman. As part of a national trend in legal reform, the Victim Assistance Program was implemented over 30 years ago to inform crime victims of their rights, provide them with services, and make available restitution. Victims counselors help victims with any issues associated with the crime in the court process. Counselors can advocate on their behalf with employers, creditors, and landlords about any problems associated with their victimization. The program also has a food pantry and clothes closet to assist with immediate needs, as well as cell phones for 911 emergency calls. This program notifies victims of important court dates and continues to inform victims post-conviction. This program is an integral part of the justice system and helps bring closure to victims of crime. This critically important program is available to any citizen of Hillsborough County or any victim of a crime that is committed in the county. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation, which states, "Whereas Americans are victims of more than 20 million crimes each year, disrupting lives regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or economic status; and whereas years ago, crime victims had poorly defined rights, little access to crime victim compensation, and few services to help rebuild their lives; and the psychological, physical, and financial devastation resulting from violence continues to tear at the fabric of American society; and whereas the voices of this nation's victims have changed laws, policies, and attitudes to promote victims' rights and services, and encourage every person to take a stand for victims and help them recover. And whereas Crime Victims Rights Week's theme, 'Expand the Circle, Reach All Victims,' addresses how the crime victims feel, can better ensure that every crime victim has access to services and support, and how professionals, organizations, and communities can work in tandem to reach all victims. And whereas Hillsborough County partners with law enforcement, courts, juvenile justice agencies, victim services, and the private sector to ensure that victims of crime are treated with the dignity and respect they deserve. And whereas the State Attorney's Office for the 13th Judicial Circuit Court of Florida is committed to helping victims recover through its Victim Assistance Program, which is free and available to victims of crimes committed in Hillsborough County. And whereas the Board applauds the Victim Assistance Program for providing exemplary services to Hillsborough County residents and visitors, which sets this community apart as a caring place to live, work, and play. And now, now therefore be it proclaimed that Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, is hereby declare April 8th through April 14th, 2018, as Crime Victims Rights Week in Hillsborough County in celebration of victims and their advocates' voices as an important chorus for fairness and dignity. Execute this fourth day of April 2018. Signed by all seven of the Board of County Commissioners." It's my pleasure to present this to you, Andrew, and we'd like to say a few words.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Hagan, for the proclamation and for the presentation of the award, which I'm pleased to accept on behalf of Curtis in our outstanding victim advocacy partners program that we have within the State Attorney's Office. There are four goals to the criminal justice system: Retribution, Recidivism, Restitution, and Rehabilitation. The four Rs. That's punishing offenders for committing crimes, helping prevent offenders from committing future crimes, helping offenders transition back into the community, and protecting the rights of victims. For the last generation, our system is focused too narrowly on the first R, Retribution, because we took a one-size-fits-all approach to different types of crime and different types of offenders. This misguided approach has been counterproductive, wasteful, and unfair, and all the while, victims have suffered silently. They've suffered because after having been victimized by the initial crime, the system has treated them as a means to an end, the person that we as prosecutors bring into the courtroom to help prove our case. But protecting victims' rights and achieving justice on their behalf is an end to the system in and of itself. Every year, more than half a million Floridians are victims of crime, with nearly 100,000 victims suffering violent crime, murder, rape, and robbery. The trauma of being a victim quietly extends beyond the visible physical injuries or financial loss. Victims endure anxiety, fear, and perhaps most importantly, shaken confidence in the goodness of humanity and society's ability to protect them from harm. Because crime victims often endure life-changing events and continue to thrive, they are truly survivors. For these survivors, the justice process often leads to frustration and re-traumatization. Over my career as a state attorney, I've sat with victims and their families and their homes in interviews and in courtrooms, holding their hands as they relive their experience of suffering and pain. Despite our best efforts, victims and their loved ones frequently do not receive the closure that they deserve from the process. Their pain doesn't vanish when the case closes. Notwithstanding the tremendous work of prosecutors, victim advocates, law enforcement, and support groups that care for victims, the promise of justice that lies at the heart of our system often remains out of reach. We can do better. Your State Attorney's Office has refocused on protecting victims. We've been working with Sheriff Cronister and our law enforcement partners to support victims from the immediate aftermath of a crime throughout the judicial process and far after the case closes. I'm proud to be one of two state attorneys in Florida who have supported Morrissey's Law, the proposed constitutional amendment that elevates victims' rights, to make sure that our system protects those rights and always treats victims with fairness and dignity. I applaud the Board of County Commissioners for their proclamation to inspire the community and raise awareness about victims' rights, and I'm here to say with one strong, unambiguous voice that Hillsborough County protects and supports our fellow survivors always.
Okay, yes, let's take a picture. And congratulations, Andrew. You're doing a great job. And I will present the next proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Okay, thank you all. This is another great proclamation. Today was just filled with many good things going on in our community. This one is near and dear to my heart. I do sit as the board's representative on the Children's Board, and I'm going to ask Kelly Paris to come forward and Jennifer Kuhn from the Department of Children and Family. She is the, I wish they dropped the interim, but interim regional director for the department to help us celebrate Child Abuse Prevention Month. Kelly Paris currently serves as the Executive Director of the Children's Board of Hillsborough County. And don't hold this against her, she did get her degree from Alabama, and she has worked in Alabama as a director of the Department of Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention. She's gotten many, many awards. of Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention. She's gotten many, many awards, most recently receiving 2014 Secretary's Award from the Florida Department of Children and Families for Community Partnership. I've never seen someone that's gone out in the community and partnered with our nonprofits. She's not just handing out check or money, but she's helping, assisting other nonprofits with their funding to really move the needle to help us really do more with child abuse prevention. She has worked in the field of child abuse prevention, domestic violence prevention, and mental health for over thirty years. We're so lucky to have her in the state of Florida. We had a little event yesterday at the Children's Museum to kick off Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I just, these comments, she has been a breath of fresh air since she's been in Hillsborough County, and her credentials, her devotion and commitment to working with children are just, I don't know of anybody else in our community that really matches that except for Jennifer, and that's her job as a state agency. But I think the legacy of the Children's Board, if you read the editorial in the paper yesterday, certainly outlines the great work that they've done and the investment that the taxpayers have made in the Children's Board is worth every cent because it is getting results. And most of their success is because of the leadership of Kelly Paris. And so this week, we are recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'm happy to present this proclamation to Kelly for what she and other agencies continue to do to prevent child abuse, make our community aware of how we must keep our children safe. And I would like to read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas all children have the right to grow and reach their full potential in safe and secure homes, and communities must work together to increase awareness about child abuse, how it can be stopped, and as prevention remains the best defense for children. And whereas a collaborative effort among neighbors, community groups, faith-based organizations, schools, businesses, law enforcement, the courts, government agencies is needed to appropriately value, nurture, support, and advocate for our children. Whereas child welfare and other social service agencies are committed to educational, emotional, physical, and social prosperity for all children and understand that this mission must be shared by all of our community members. Whereas research shows that parents and caregivers who have social networks and the knowledge to seek help in times of trouble are more resilient and better able to provide safe environments and nurturing experiences for their children. Whereas Hillsborough County's future prosperity depends on the healthy development of more than 300,000 children living, developing, and learning in this diverse region. Whereas in collaboration with the Florida Department of Children and Families, Prevent Child Abuse Florida, Aounce and Prevention Florida, the Children's Board of Hillsborough County is engaging and teaching the community to prevent child abuse and neglect by promoting awareness of healthy child development, positive parenting practices, and types of concrete support that families all need. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and Hillsborough County urges all residents to make children a top priority and to participate in activities that will strengthen families and communities to foster an optimal environment for healthy child development," signed by all seven County Commissioners. Presented to Kelly and Jennifer. She's the partner.
Thank you.
Don't, shouldn't say crimes, but she's a big partner in this. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. I want to thank Commissioner Merman for her Blue Ribbon Commission and taking such a proactive approach to the prevention of child abuse and neglect and the safety of Hillsborough County's children. Also, our law enforcement officers that play such a huge role in that on a daily basis, and our retired sheriff, who I met with very early on, and we have partnered on the prevention of child abuse and neglect. It would be, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the Board of County Commissioners because they have been such a strong partner of the Children's Board for the last five years since I've been here, investing in domestic violence, investing in the prevention of homelessness, and all of those things that make the concrete supports for children at risk. So, thank you all, and of course, Mike Merrill and his team for their continued support. Jennifer?
As a board member on the Children's Board, I also appreciate Ms. Paris and her entire team and all that they do for this county. It does take the county, the state, and all of our local community-based care agencies to combat abuse and neglect, and I appreciate the partnerships that we receive to end the needless victimization of children in Hillsborough County. So, thank you to the Children's Board, and thank you to the Board of County Commissioners and Commissioner Merman.
And Commissioner Miller will present our next proclamation.
Good morning. It is a privilege for me to present this next proclamation declaring Paralegal Day. I'd like to invite up Bonnie Botalini, President of the Hillsborough County Chapter of Hillsborough County Paralegal Association of Florida. Do you have others with you today?
There are paralegals from the County Attorney's Office.
Come on.
And another paralegal here also.
Each year, the Board of County Commissioners recognize paralegals in Hillsborough County for outstanding service they provide to this community. Paralegals are trained professionals who provide a variety of specialized skills to assist lawyers in the preparation of documents, research and writing, interviewing clients and witnesses, trial preparation, and more. They aspire to high ethical standards and provide service with integrity and reliability. The legal community relies heavily on the expertise of paralegals, and for this, we recognize the hard work paralegals do for this community. So, it's my privilege to present this proclamation, and I will read it. Whereas the practice of law demanding, challenging, and complex, and whereas lawyers require the service of knowledgeable and reliable professionals who facilitate the practice of law, and whereas paralegals provide valuable support to lawyers through a variety of specialized skills, and whereas paralegals are educated, trained, and experienced professionals with interdisciplinary expertise in legal research and writing, interviewing clients and witnesses, case and document management, trial preparation, and more, and whereas paralegals aspire to maintain integrity, ethics, and high levels of competence in their services. And whereas the Florida Bar encourages paralegals to meet strict standards, undergo certification and registration procedures. And whereas the Hillsborough County Chapter of the Paralegal Association of Florida and the Tampa Bay Paralegal Association advance the profession through continuing education, networking, and campaigns that raise public awareness and appreciation of paralegals. Whereas paralegals and paralegal professionals, organizations provide valuable service to residents, lawyers, and businesses in Hillsborough County, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County does hereby declare April 13th, 2018, as Paralegal Day, and Hillsborough County encourages all residents to join in saluting the expertise and hard work of paralegals, executed this fourth day of April 2018, signed by the seven members of the County Commission, and I present this to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller, and all the Board of County Commissioners. I just want to say I'm pleased to accept this honor on behalf of all paralegals in Hillsborough County who provide professional and knowledgeable support to attorneys in all areas of law, county, and public and private. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. I just wanted to quickly say, as a lawyer on the Board, I feel incumbent to say thank you because I know I've had some good paralegals that, and I know how important they are. So, thank you all for your work.
And our last proclamation will be Commissioner Higginbotham declaring 2018 as Fair Housing Month for all.
Thank you very much, and if Ms. Howell could come forward. Is Cheryl here? There we go, come on. And if you've got a group with you, please come forward. Here's Commissioner Merman, as her coming up. She mentioned that this is Fair Housing Month, and what progress and strides that have been made.
Let's wait till it quiets down a little so we can get everybody's undivided attention. This is an important proclamation.
Who's minding the fort? Welcome, everyone. It's an honor and a privilege to make this presentation for Fair Housing for All Month proclamation for April. Whereas the housing is critical for the health and stability of families and communities, ensuring an emotional and financial foundation for the future generations, and whereas equal access to housing is an essential component of America's promise of individual liberty, equality, and freedom of choice. Whereas ongoing education, outreach, and monitoring are keys to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities, and whereas barriers to fair housing can be removed through continued cooperation, commitment, and support, and the national and state laws mandating equality for all housing transactions. Whereas Hillsborough County prohibits discrimination in housing and protects residents from such abuses through Equal Opportunity Administration and by working with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Whereas April 11th marks the 50th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act, which implemented a national policy for fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, national origin, sex, familial status, or disability, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare April 2018 as Fair Housing for All Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all agencies, institutions, and individuals to support Fair Housing Act and its missions to ensure ethical practices and action to protect buyers and renters from discriminations, executed on April 4th, 2018, signed by all seven Commissioners. And I just want to commend you and your staff for doing such a wonderful job. It's been an honor to be on the Advisory Committee and to watch what you've done, especially since you can't come in and become part of the staff and family here at Hillsborough County. So, the floor is yours, and then when we come up for a photo, I'll give you the proclamation.
Good morning. I just want to take a moment and thank all of you who have been a part of making a difference here in Hillsborough County. Fair housing is still an issue that people have to struggle with every day. We are celebrating fifty years, fifty years of this journey. There are still people who are committed to progress in this issue, and I want to thank my staff, and they're not often seen, but I want to thank them for all of their hard work. I have managers here today. I have, you know, all of my paraprofessionals here today, the people who answer the phones, the people who take the messages, everybody, everybody makes a difference in this walk. And I just want to say thank you to all of those who are out there in the audience that support this, and most of all, I want to say thank you to my county administrator and our Board of County Commissioners for all that you do to support affordable housing here in Hillsborough County.
Please come forward for a photograph.
Thank you so much, Cheryl, for all you do. She had her very first housing summit last week, and it was a resounding success. So, it's great. Okay, we are ready to move into the day's agenda. And Mr. Merrill, would you like to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes. We have one off the agenda item which was added by Commissioner Kemp. This is Item F. 7, directing the County Attorney's Office to bring back a draft ordinance proposing to amend the county charter to require the county commission terms are limited to no more than ten consecutive years of service. Commissioner Kemp did ask me to defer Item F. 3, which was the item concerning the regional transit plan, to do additional staff work on that item. So, that will be deferred. Nothing else has been removed from consent for any reason. We have a handful of time certens, beginning at 10:00 a.m. with one public hearing, D. 1. That's a public hearing, except comments on the substantial amendments to the program years 2012, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 for the annual action plan required by HUD. At 10:15, we have Item F. 6, which is Commissioner White's item, for discussion on scheduling a public input for the PD&E study of the possible widening of 19th Avenue in Sun City Center. 10:30, F. 5, which is Commissioner Merman's item. That's to approve the 2018 two-year modification to the local workforce service plan of Career Source, which is required by the Federal Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act of 2014. 10:45, Item F. 2, which is Commissioner Higginbotham's item. That's directing the county attorney to bring back a draft ordinance on May 2nd, proposing an amendment to the charter to make the five constitutional officers elected on a nonpartisan basis. 11:00 a.m., F. 4, Commissioner Miller's item, directing the county attorney to bring back a draft ordinance, proposing to amend Section 8.04 of the charter to require that charter amendments become effective upon approval by a 60% vote of the electors. And the final time cert, 11:15, is Item F. 7. That is Commissioner Kemp's item, which I mentioned earlier, to revise the charter, limiting the number of, limiting the terms for commissioners to no more than ten consecutive years. Those are the changes.
Okay, thank you. We have motion to approve the changes. Motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to approve changes to the agenda. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Commissioner Hagan, have your vote. Motion carried, 7 to 0.
Okay, thank you. We're now going to go to the public comment portion of the meeting. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the Board that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or a staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the Board members and the public. The Board has set aside a forty-five-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. People wishing to speak before the Board during the public comment portion of the meeting should complete the electronic request for public comment form located in the lobby just outside the Board room. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the Board, please state your name, speak clearly into the microphone. Three minutes are allowed for each speaker. The first speaker for on the agenda items is Sharon Calvert, followed by Betty James, then I- then Aionne Townsend, and Dee Williams. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Sharon Calvert. Regarding Agenda Item F.2, I hope this Board will oppose an ordinance making the five constitutionals nonpartisan. Regarding Item F.4, this request should be changed so that any revenue-raising referendum requires a 60% supermajority, not charter amendments. Regarding Item F.7, it is time for the Board to address the big issue of term limits. I believe eight is enough. Eight is enough have passed in Miami-Dade and Jacksonville, 77-23%, by Pinellas, 72-28%, Sarasota, 68-32%, and a three-, four-year term limit in Broward, past 80-20%. Eight is enough, as we should not have dynasties on the commission or the bureaucracies that the commissioners serve on, nor the dynasties for chair. Special taxing districts should have equitable and fair county representation. However, over 71% of current Hart Board members now live in the city of Tampa, while 2/3 of Hart's revenues comes from the unincorporated county, creating a taxation without representation. Almost a half million taxpayer dollars and untold amounts of highly-paid county staff have been pursuing the billion-dollar baseball stadium. But where's the transparency and oversight of these appropriations? The creation of the Secret Baseball Committee was rushed through in October of 2014 as a last-minute discussion item, which inhibited the public from weighing in. Two weeks later, the hiring of the New York baseball law firm was rubber-stamped through the consent agenda with no dollar amount stated, only that it could be accommodated in fiscal year 2015 budget. Is that a normal policy to approving law firms for years without knowing the cost? Trust remains a big issue, and using taxpayer resources in secret backdoor negotiation breeds distrust, as does enabling unfair taxation without representation. The use of the taxpayer money and resources in closed-door meetings needs to stop. The raisin' our private-sector partners should pursue the stadium with their own funds. We hear rumblings from the NPO that there's going to be another transit tax hike pursued in 2020. I hope the Board and the NPO will focus on solutions that actually provide congestion relief, and no torrid tears is justified.
Thank you, Sharon. Betty James, Aionne Townsend, and Dee Williams. Is Betty here? Oh, there she is, yes. Good morning.
Good morning. Betty James, I'm from Sun City Center. I'm here to address information on F.4. That's Commissioner Higginbotham's proposal to identify all constitutional officers as nonpartisans on the ballot. A yes vote will create a large, uninformed group of voters. They will not have the opportunity to discuss the philosophies of the different candidates because they won't know the different candidates. The most common complaint we hear in our community and in communities across Hillsborough County are that many of the voters either don't vote in the partisan races, they make a blind guess based, and they select the first name on the alphabetical list, are, they just pick a name that they've heard on the media without evaluating the circumstances about. My whole thing is that we need to limit, we don't need to limit the intercourse between, or communication between the voters and the candidates, and this is what this proposal will do. I'm asking you not to complicate the voting process any further. There's no way to, this is no way to select leaders for our county. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker is Aionne Townsend. Did I say your first name right? I'm so sorry.
It's Aionne.
Aionne.
I own this shirt, it belongs to me.
Aionne. You did that to me. I'm going to remember from now on. Thank you. Good morning.
Chairman Merman, good morning, and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here to address you today. My name is Aionne Townsend, and I hail from Plant City. So I wanted to address two issues, and I guess I just want to second what the two previous speakers have said, and just, I had other comments to make, but I will just add one to their comments. All constitutional officers, regardless of party affiliation, should behave in a nonpartisan manner, as they represent not their party but their constituents. To my knowledge, there are no constitutional officers who have behaved or executed their responsibilities in a partisan manner. And Sheriff G. is a perfect example of this, and you have recognized that today. So my only question is, if it ain't broke, why fix it? Why fix it now? The second issue I wanted to address is that what I read in the press was the issue of transforming the county commission from three countywide positions and four single-member districts to nine single-member districts. I strongly suggest that this is ill-advised for a number of reasons. Nine individual members would be like putting nine siblings in a room to fight over the spoils of dinner. We would lose the 30,000-foot view of the county that countywide commissioners are responsible to provide to this Board. It would remove accountability for countywide members of this body to have a broader, all-inclusive view of the county that unifies us and helps east meet west, north meet south, in a logical and equitable manner. Such a move would also decrease the representation on the Board for every single citizen in our county by 3/4. Most importantly, it would decrease voter participation by 3/4, and therefore is a form of not only underrepresentation but also voter suppression. I do, however, think that the growth in our county that we have experienced and the growth that we are anticipated to have, it would make sense to increase the number of districts in our county. I would, however, suggest that we move to five individual districts and four countywide districts, so that we preserve that 30,000-foot view with the broader and more inclusive view of the county, while at the same time increasing the representation of every single voter in this county and every single citizen from four to five, and promote increased voter participation. I also support Commissioner Kemp's motion to set term limits. I think that's advisable. In closing, I ask why now? Whose interests are being served here? Does this pass the smell test for broad community interests, or does it suggest that more individual interests are at hand? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Dee Williams.
I hope my three minutes didn't start while I took that long walk.
No, it didn't. Don't worry.
Okay, I'd like to speak to F.2, on nonpartisan elections of the constitutional officers. Though in the first place, it's an asinine idea. I wish it were a weed so I could spritz it with Roundup 365. There's no such thing as nonpartisan. When you get two people together, unless they're on the same wavelength, there's partisanship. There's partisanship in my own family. Most of them belong to a different party to what I do, so imagine what the family reunions are like. And I think that what this will do, will your voter petition participation turnout is bad enough in this county already, and I think that this type of election will make it worse. So I would say amen to Ms. James's proposal that the voter will be so informed that they probably won't even vote at all. I would also like to make a remark to the F.4 and F.7. It disappoints me to see three amendments to the county charter on this agenda today. This county charter has been reviewed six times since its inception in 1985. The subject of nonpartisan elections has come up at every single one of them and been defeated every time. Now, this charter was last reviewed in 2015. They saw no need to make changes to it at that time. It was studied by a group of people countywide, and I see no reason to make changes to it now. So I hope you will nix this idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So to start the off-the-agenda speakers, Joanne O'Brien. Good morning, Joanne.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Joanne O'Brien, Thrasher Drive, District 3. I'm up here today to thank you, Commissioners, for giving we, the people, the opportunity to speak on different agendas and what have you, and I want to thank Commissioner Merman on the bullying campaigns. You know, as the last meeting, we did have an issue in my district with a kid being bullied in the schools, and I think that's under control now. And I'm the type of person, if I see a kid being bullied, I'm going to stand up and say something. If I see a child being abused, I'm going to say something. I don't stand for any nonsense. I speak my mind. I guess you all know that from the years that I've been coming down here. Like child abuse, animal abuse, they all fall in the same range. I thank you for giving me this opportunity, and thank you, dear Lord, for letting me open my eyes to a new sunrise every day. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Randy Mitchell, then Cheryl Henley, and Matisse Gallman. Randy Mitchell. Is he here? Next speaker would be Cheryl Henley. Good morning.
I would like to ask that Deborah and Matisse speak before I do.
Oh, okay.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Matisse Gallman. My husband and I have four children. My husband was separated, was honorably separated from the military and was shortly thereafter diagnosed with PTSD, and after, and we've been struggling ever since. We've moved, we moved into his dad's on a temporary basis until we could get on our feet. Well, unfortunately, that never happened. Now all of us, three adults and four teens, are living in a single-family home. We would love to move into our own place, but a three-bedroom apartment in Brandon costs over $1,500 a month. We just checked on the new apartments being built on Bloomingdale and 301. Those start at $1,724 a month. Our children are very involved in school activities, so uprooting them and leaving this area is not an option for us. We are two very hard-working people who feel like the deck is stacked, is who feel like the deck is stacked against us. The money we have goes to cover the basic needs of our children. We even go, have gone as far as to only own one vehicle to try to cut expenses. Juggling two jobs and four very active children with one car is very challenging. Hard-working people should not have to live in another county to be able to afford safe housing. Please help to address this issue with this growing crisis. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And Deborah Livingston? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Debbie Livingston. I am a member of Nativity Catholic Church and part of the Hope Organization. I'm also a small-business owner here in Hillsborough County. I employ just under 100 employees, and my company is rapidly growing. I pay my employees well over minimum wage, starting salaries around $32,000. I was shocked recently to learn that so many of my employees are struggling to make ends meet. Many of them live on the outskirts of Hillsborough, in Pasco and in Polk, because they cannot afford decent, a decent place to call home. Areas such as Brandon, Riverview, and Plant City that support my business, that ones we might have thought were affordable 15 years ago when I started my business, are really not affordable anymore. Hard-working people should not have to live in another county to be able to afford housing. Many of my employees commute well over an hour to get to work, often resulting in absenteeism, tardiness, which unfortunately leads to termination and unemployment. My business cannot survive in this county if the very people I employ cannot afford to live here. And with the unemployment rate declining, it is becoming more difficult to find people to fill jobs in my fast-growing business. We need more housing that is affordable for hard-working people like my employees. The creation of such housing will help businesses like mine maintain employees. This will not only positively impact my business and our employees, but other small businesses and other businesses in our community. I could have brought a dozen of employees with me today, even more than that, so that you can hear their stories, but obviously I have a business to run and they need to work. Matisse was graciously willing to come here today to speak. I please implore you to consider this initiative of affordable housing. We've been talking about it here for so long. So please, please, help our people in our county to afford to live here so businesses like myself can continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bernice Powell Jackson.
Reverend Bernice Powell Jackson, I serve as pastor, First United Church of Tampa. I'm Vice President of Hope, and today I stand before you on behalf of two of my members who could not be here today because unable to find affordable housing for their family in Hillsborough County, they have just moved to South Carolina. One was a security guard at Busch Gardens, and the other formerly had been a cafeteria worker in the school system. They both had a heart for broken children and were foster parents for a number of children and adoptive parents for three beautiful children who came from our county, along with their own child. But there was no safe place that they could afford to live with their family in our county. Last year, in fact, they were forced to move to Pasco County, only to find a few months later that the owner of the house they were renting had not been paying the mortgage, and therefore they were served with an eviction notice. They were able to move to another house right down the street a day or so before Hurricane Irma, but now that owner has decided to sell that property. After searching for several months for affordable housing in Hillsborough or Pasco, they came to the conclusion that they must move out of state. This is a loss for our county, for other children in the foster care system, and for our church. But you can do something about this. You can do something about this by establishing an Affordable Housing Trust Fund in Hillsborough County. This can be a win-win for the people of our county. We can have a baseball stadium and more affordable housing for the people working the minimum-wage jobs there. The children and families of our county are depending on you. When Dr. King was killed 50 years ago today, he was organizing a Poor People's Campaign, and you can be a part of that legacy. The 1,600 people who will be attending our Nehemiah Action on April 16th are inviting all of you, each Commissioner, once again to attend that important meeting for our county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cheryl Henley. And then Randy Mitchell, did he ever come back? No? Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Cheryl Henley from St. Mark's Episcopal Church, and I'm a member of Hillsborough Organization for Progress and Equality, or HOPE, and it's a community organization which works to bring solutions and find long-term solutions to serious community problems. On behalf of the 24 members of the congregations of HOPE, I'm here to invite each of you again to attend our large-public meeting on April 16th at 7:00 p.m. at Bible-Based Fellowship Church in, on Ehrlich Road in Carrollwood. We will have 1,600 people there who will be listening to, you know, the questions asked, and we would be looking for your leadership. We are there to hear stories and to ask for your leadership on these issues in Hillsborough County. Again, please prioritize attending our large meeting on Monday, April 16th at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Jim Davison, then we have David McAllister and H.K. Edgerton. Then we have David McAllister and H.K. Edgerton.
Jim Davison, New Tampa.
Good morning.
Let's see if I can go through $8 billion in three minutes here. The new transportation, or, we all know where the transportation topic's going. It's going to a referendum. And I just wanted to put this up front so that you'd have something else to consider. These are new revenues that weren't included on the old '20-'40 long-range transportation plan. The first one is a mobility fee that you've already passed, and the NPO is going to say that that's going to bring in $600 million between '21 and '20-45. The current policy of growth and ad valorem tax, Commissioner Higgins' program is going to be possibly impinged upon by the homestead exemption. In 2020, it's supposed to be worth $50 million if you took $30 million of that. And then, that would leave 20 million if you added an X amount of dollars every year up until '20-45. Two million, three million, four million, five million, those are the amounts of money that you would generate over that period of time. Something that hasn't been discussed since 1995 on transportation is value capture. It's estimated that you could get $1 billion with leveraging the state and federal money, which means you'd have to bring up about $250 million, which is easy to do. The CRAs for the city of Tampa over the last 15 years have raised $340. In 1995, the NPO said that they could raise $162 million. Inflation by itself would bring in $273 million. County transportation sales tax at 1/4% over 25 years with a 3.8% growth rate brings in $3.01 billion. Heart gets over $1 billion of that, and the rest of it is disseminated. A renewal of a CIT tax at 1/4% between 2027, when it has to be renewed, to 2046, 20 years, brings in a total of $2.7 billion, which is more money than the previous 20 years at a half cent. So, everybody's going to get more money at 1/4% than they got over the last 20 years at a half cent. It's just the way the numbers come down. All this, what this does, and you'll notice that in this, I gave 7% to affordable housing, which is $190 million. It's not just the right thing to do, but you are going to need that for the environmental justice studies and to make sure that you leapfrog other municipalities and counties in the country looking after those federal monies. So, this should be studied by you. This doesn't raise any taxes, raises over $6 billion for transportation and $2.4 billion for the rest of the county and city infrastructures. This is what we need to have done. You can get everything you want without raising taxes. And I would urge the Commission to give this to a committee to try to study, and I assure you that the numbers are correct. If your finance department has any arguments with it, I would gladly sit down with them and go over them with them. So, I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm intrigued by the proposal that I see here before the board. I'd like to see it at least receive a high-level staff review. And one way we could accomplish that would be to send it over to the Citizens Advisory Committee. Would that be correct?
I mean, that's always an option. Mr. Merrill, do you have any other suggestions?
Well, I think before we send it to them, we ought to vet the numbers and make sure that they are correct.
Well, I know we, as Hillsborough County Government, staff the CAC, so I'd like to see it vetted with our CAC and staff, you know, working together in conjunction towards to seeing if this is something that the Board of County Commissioners could take more interest in. So, I'd like to make a motion that we refer this over to the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Excuse me, if I could just, I wasn't being argumentative. What I'm saying is that before we send it to the CAC, we ought to spend the time to make sure that we agree with the numbers. Otherwise, the CAC is just wasting their time. So, if we can just have the opportunity to review it, discuss it with Mr. Davis, and then give the CAC something to work with that has been vetted, that's all I'm suggesting.
Okay. How long do you think you would need to vet the numbers and have something ready for the CAC to look at?
I don't know, it's the first time we've seen him, so I don't know. I don't imagine it'll take very long, but. So, we've been through this before, where the CAC had numbers that were not correct. And I don't want to put them in that position. And you should not be put in the position of accepting numbers that haven't been vetted. So, I'm just suggesting if we can just have that time, that might be helpful to everyone.
Do you think four weeks would be sufficient?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, I'll withdraw my motion, but I would like to make a motion that we request a staff report on this issue to be scheduled.
Yes.
The meeting after next. Can someone help me with a date real quick? Does the exact date have to be in the motion?
Would be the second meeting in May?
Second meeting in May, yeah.
Okay.
Sound good?
May 18th is the date.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Chris, to have a staff report on the presented transportation new revenue proposal by Mr. Davison. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you all. David McAllister, H.K. Edgerton.
Good morning, Commissioners. David McAllister. I come to advocate for an appreciation of local history and veterans, especially those of the War Between the States. Since we last met, I've been honored to accompany Mr. H.K. Edgerton on his travels in Florida as a Southern Civil Rights Advocate. A couple of highlights were the Battle of Narcoucy Mill over there near St. Cloud. It's in its 25th year. This reenactment is a significant historical tourism and has impact. I am pleased to say that the South won that day, but that's, they switch off on those things. H.K.'s has been a guest at the local A.J.E. Wilson UDC chapter meeting. He's been to St. Augustine in Jacksonville and to Lakeland and Fort Myers on his latest visit to Florida. We even attended the opening of the Joyner Library, which I noted was on Victor Criss Drive. Very nice. And he's helped to present the Sons of Confederate Veterans Hunley Award at the Junior ROTC units in Tampa. We're now in April, Southern History Month, and the 26th will be Confederate Memorial Day in Florida. We would like to see official recognition of this year, as you have so many years in the past. Yep. For the last few months, I've been taking visitors like Mr. Edgerton to our local veterans' park. It's a fine park, and our Confederate veterans are commemorated in the War Between the States Theater and on the Prisoner of War Monument, but I am continually embarrassed to show visitors this plaque which needs correction, the Cal Cavalry marker. The artwork is by a local man, Mike Bethune, and is terrific and unique, but the engraving has an obvious, fundamental, howling error. It says Cal Calvary, not Cal Cavalry. Please see that this is corrected before the dedication. Now, on a personal note, last time I was here, I was put down as being a lesser American than some others. Well, here is my passport, my passport to show that I am an American. And you know, I was born and raised in Miami amongst the exile community. And what you don't see on this passport is a stamp for a visit to support Castro's Communist Cuba. I believe in forgiveness. Let's respect each other. It would be a step towards Martin Luther King's Table of Brotherhood, which has been so pushed back lately. Let's respect all American veterans and their families, and this month especially, let's respect the Confederate American veterans and their descendants on the official Florida State Holiday, April 26th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, our last speaker, is H.K. Edgerton for Off the Agenda.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Members of the Commission and Honorable Members of the public. I am H.K. Edgerton, and I was asked to speak to you by the Augusta Jane Evans Chapter of the United Daughters of the Confederacy, of which I am an honorary member, life member. In 1861, young men, the darlings of Tampa and Hillsborough County, would volunteer to form the Sunny South Guards, which would later become the Fourth Florida Infantry Company K. They imposed their lives to protect Florida and Hillsborough County on the battlefield from invasion from the north. They were outnumbered 3 to 1. Some gave their last measure for heart and home. Some have family that reside here today, and I respectfully ask to read their names. Private Robert J. Carney, age 20, died. Private Stafford Davis, age 29, died. And as you glance at your missing man chair, please remember Private Deese, age 20, who died in prison camp. Private Joseph Eddie died. Private Thomas J. Finley died. Corporal Joseph Harris, age 22, died in Rock Island Prison of War Camp. Private Patterson Jawors, age 16, died. First Lieutenant Mitchell, age 27, died. Corporal Simeon Moody, age 21, died. Private Joseph D. Moody, age 18, died. Benjamin L. Rice, age 21, died. Private George Robertson, age 23, died. Private Michael J. Robles, age 24, died in Camp Chase Prison of War Camp. Private Joseph died. Private Albert White, age 27, died also in Prison of War Camp. Private John J. Wilder died in a Prison of War Camp, age 24. I am, I and all the Southern Heritage Community, hope this Commission will honor the noble sacrifices of these American veterans this year. God bless you, and as again I say, thank you for allowing me to stand before you this morning.
Thank you very much. Randy Mitchell, did he ever show up? Okay. That closes out our public comment. Need a motion to approve consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Chris, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay. Mr. Merrill, we're ready to go into the agenda.
All right. So, we start with our first public hearing, which is D1. Okay. We need someone from Affordable Housing.
She's going to go and get her.
All right. Let's, then, if we want to go to item, hang on a second.
Item D1.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Howell. I'm the Director of Affordable Housing. Good morning, Commissioners. Item D1. This item is for the substantial amendment of our consolidated plan and our annual action I apologize. This is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the substantial plan for the years 2012, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17, and for the addition of the new goals. To adopt a substantial amendment to the program with the funded projects and to close the public comment period.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no questions, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to item D1? Okay, please come forward.
I just wanted to bring the Commission's attention to this, affordable housing. It is going to get worse. The longer you delay in addressing this, the bigger the problem is going to become. We are talking about putting in premium transit. The idea of gentrification and displacement is no longer a if and, it happens. And it will make things worse, and you are going to put, both of these corridors are going right through the urban core and through the poor sections of our county. It's why I included the $190 million from the CIT tax in the future. If you don't address it now, like every single other community in America has begun to address it, that has put transit in, you are going to pay for a higher price, and it's going to be a much difficult place in the community to live. It's not going to be a homogeneous community. It's going to be more and more separated. So, I urge you to advance this plan and to look at other ways of improving the affordable housing in this county. It is a health issue, not just a moral issue, not just a housing issue. It is a health issue for this county. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I do want to remind everybody that, please, there will be a comprehensive presentation at the next board meeting on affordable housing, as promised. So, okay. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of item D1? Any wishing to speak in opposition? We'll close the public hearing. We need a motion to adopt. A motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Chris to adopt item D1. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
And that takes us to our 1015 Time Certain, which is Commissioner White's item, F6.
Okay. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My commissioner item is probably going to be the easiest of the day. I don't know whether or not we have any representatives from the public work staff here, but I can just speak to the county administrator.
Yes.
With respect to public input on that PD&E study for 19th Avenue, I just want to ask that that be conducted at a time point, regardless of the year in which it's conducted, between Thanksgiving and Easter, because we have a lot of seasonal residents in the area, and I just want to make sure that they're in town and engaged and have an opportunity to weigh in.
Absolutely, sure.
Okay. And can I ask a question too? Because I was very. Okay. I was, I worked pretty hard to get 19th Avenue on the list to be widened, and this extends for a long way. So, the part that goes into Sun City, so there's one side of 75, and then the other side is 75. So, is there a plan? Are they working on a plan right now to widen all of 19th? And are they going to do it in sections? Is it going to be? I just want to make sure that we don't hold anything up. I appreciate Commissioner White's request because it's important for those residents. I mean, it's a very seasonal community. But on the other side, 75, it's very residential, as he knows. So, I guess I just want to verify that you'll let us know what the plan is.
Rob, can you speak to that? Okay. Well, we'll have to get back to you.
It's not high on the list to be done? I mean, it's a little bit lower down, so.
Yeah. We'll get back to you before the end of the day.
Okay. So, we have a, is this a motion?
It's not a motion. It's just feedback, request of staff.
Okay. Very good. Okay. No action, so we'll move on to the next item.
All right. That's your 1030 Time Certain. I think it's 1030, yep. Item F5, which is actually your item.
Yes.
Commissioner Merman.
We wanted to put this on the agenda. As you know, Career Source is an important item, and wanted to make sure that if there are any questions, that, we have Ken Jones here and Judith Dorsey, who is the interim Director of the Career Source Tampa Bay, to answer any questions. But just to give you a little bit of background of why this is on the agenda. On March 2nd, 2016, this board, Board of County Commissioners, did approve the Career Source Tampa Bay 2016 to 2020 Local Workforce Services Plan for the period July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2020. The Federal Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, we call it WIIOA, requires local workforce development areas to develop a four-year workforce services plan on needs of the local workforce system, how they'll work to meet those needs. In January 2018, the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity asked all local workforce development boards to develop a two-year modification to their 2016-2020 workforce services plan. Regulations require states and local workforce development boards to regularly revisit and recalibrate state plan strategies, and most of that is because of unemployment changes and different labor workforce changes. In response to changing economic conditions and workforce needs workforce needs of the state. This two-year modification is basically a required midpoint review revision of the respective four-year plan. It's an opportunity for local workforce boards to modify the plan based on economic funding, statistical changes, and workforce needs that impact their ability to carry out the identified services. As the local chief elected official, the Hillsborough Board of County Commissioners' signature is required to acknowledge the county's awareness, review, approval of the document, also that we will support Career Source Tampa Bay in implementation of this work plan. This work plan is not related to any of the issues that have plagued Career Source Tampa Bay over the last few months. It does not relate to any budget, any governance, or administrative problems. I will say, right now, this week, the whole week, and probably next week, the U.S. Department of Labor and the Inspector General from the state is parked at Career Source Tampa Bay and Career Source Pinellas, going through all the documents to audit as requested by the governor and by the Department of Economic Opportunity, as well as this board has requested, to find out what the issues are regarding just the reporting of the jobs. But that doesn't have anything to do with this workforce services plan. So I don't see any questions here, Ken, or do, Ken, do you want to make any comments? Ken Jones? I think we're good, but I need to, I've got to pass the gavel to my vice chair and make a motion to approve the two-year modification on F5.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Higginbotham, discussion.
None.
Seeing no one in the queue, then clerk will open the board for a vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you all very much. Mr. Merrill.
All right, that takes us to item F2, if you want to waive the rules.
If I could just step in here, in the event there's someone who has a quick item or two, I'm happy to go ahead, but that...
Oh, sure.
My feeling is this may take more than 10 or 15 minutes. But if there's some, so we don't keep people waiting.
So are you suggesting maybe we take care of the regular agenda items before we go in?
Sure.
Yeah, just as a matter of courtesy.
All right, let's see, Public Utilities, George, can you do your item? Item B8.
So we're on the regular agenda, item B8.
Good morning, Commissioner George Cassidy, Public Utilities. Item B8 is a request to approve realignment of funds, $10,650,000 within our Public Utilities Department FY18 Capital Improvement Plan. This action is necessary as a result of completing certain projects, certain changed priorities in our program, and expanded project needs. This realignment will adjust project funds to better meet project cost estimates and projections. The result of the realignment is a net zero impact on our budget, and we request approval.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Miller to approve item B8. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, George. Can we do board appointments? F1?
Can do board appointments. Okay, Luanne?
Your board is a diversity advisory council. We have three positions that are open, African-American, gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, and Indian-Asian. Choose one from each category.
Madam Chair, if, if I may, I, I think this is probably the appropriate time. I'd like to make a motion that we re-advertise for Indian-Asian.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
There's only one applicant.
Right.
I think we need to have a choice.
That's fine, so we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Chris, to re-advertise for the Indian-Asian appointment. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
I'd like to ask a question. Did we send this out through email, newspaper, or any, how do we, how do we send this information?
I have an email distribution list, and Communications sends it out to, they have a media blast, that they send it out to all the newspapers, whoever wants to pick it up.
Was this the only application we received?
Pardon?
Was this the only application we received?
Yes.
So we're doing it all over again, do we think we're going to get more participation? I mean, I don't think it's going to get even more participation than what it has right now by doing it all over again. It's going to be an expense, I don't, I don't see why we need to do that. We've done it before by having just one person accept that one person. So I don't know if I'm going to support the motion.
I mean, I think that, here's the issue, I think there are some that feel strongly, maybe against this one individual, and I think if that's the case, then...
Strongly against them?
I think so. I don't know for sure, but I imagine that they want to re-advertise to see if there are other people out there.
Could you explain to me why they're strongly against them?
Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
I, I, I can't explain that, and I, I wanted to address the issue of why I support reopening it. I think that sometimes our normal channels are simple channels, and I think that, you know, when we get one response, we can do a better job of digging a little deeper. There are organizations out there of various ethnic backgrounds that could be contacted, and through their membership, you know, information disseminated that would go a little deeper than we normally go. I know we have people on staff that handle community relations, especially in this particular area, and I didn't hear that they were engaged to find us someone. But to just have one choice is not the best policy in this particular case. I think having multiple choices would open the door for, you know, better, better choices that we can choose from.
Okay, Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Well, Mr. Fletcher, I, I guess every, everything before us in our packet is a complete and open record, like anything else.
Public record.
Public record.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, every application, every essay.
So, so I was, I was hoping that my motion, you know, would just pass with little or no discussion, but, you know, I'm, I'm reading this gentleman's cover letter, and, you know, it states that while a police officer in Malaysia, that, that one of the tasks that he was involved in was executing local criminals. You know, I don't know much about policing in Malaysia, I know that's not a, a function of the police here in the United States, but, you know, just little things like that just didn't sit well with me. You know, it's, it's our only, it's our only applicant, you know, I'd like to just see if we can get, you know, a, cast a wider net perhaps, and have more than one to choose from, so.
Okay, Commissioner Miller, and like I say, we have two choices here, re-advertise or vote against the applicant and end up re-advertising anyway.
So we're going to, we're going to not take this person's application and re-advertise because we don't know exactly what his job was in Malaysia? That's just like saying that someone who works in the death penalty chambers in Florida, because they inject the, the, whatever it is they're injected with, they can't, if they move to Tampa and stayed in, and moved to Hillsborough County, they couldn't apply for any position because they were part of that, that was their job in, in wherever they do it. I mean, that makes no sense to me, I don't understand that. We don't know what the, what he did in Malaysia, and now we're going to hold that against him because that was his job. I don't see why we have to advertise. I just do not see why we have to advertise, it makes no sense to me, but just, I mean...
And, and I agree that you could be right, I just think it's worth a second look.
In the past, we have accepted one person and, and, and one category. Now we don't want to do that. I don't, that, to me, it makes no sense why we have a double standard, because of what this person actually put down the fact that this was his job in Malaysia. We don't know what they do in Malaysia.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I, I wouldn't raise that so much, as I had concerns that we maybe, in our traditional advertising or informational ways, are not reaching out to that community well enough, so that we're, so that not enough people know about this opportunity. And I think Commissioner Miller brings up a good point about how we're outreaching, and maybe in specific instances that are so narrow like this, there has to be more contact with that community to, we can see that, to see about the availability and interest, and that there might be more. So I would support going out and, and seeing if we can maybe more, get a broader range of people and let them know that this is available.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Chris, to re-advertise. So let's see where that puts us, and I see no further discussion, so please record your vote on the motion as presented.
Motion carried six to one, Commissioner Miller voted no.
Okay, so we will re-advertise on that position, we're back on the other two positions.
Choose one from each category, Commissioner Merman.
Number three.
And from the second category? Commissioner Merman?
Part, oh, you want, I thought we were going to do, okay, the next one will be four, number four.
Okay, Commissioner Chris?
In category one, Sabrina Griffin, which is number two, and in category two, Matthew Churnsley, which is number four.
Commissioner White?
Two and four?
Commissioner Miller?
Two and four?
Commissioner Hagan?
Two and four.
Commissioner Kemp?
Two and four.
Commissioner Higginbotham?
Two and six.
It will be Sabrina Griffith for the African-American category, and Matthew Churnsley for the gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender category.
We need a motion to confirm. A motion by Commissioner Chris, seconded by Commissioner White, to confirm the appointments on item F1. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill?
All right, so it is 10:45, we can take up item F2.
Thank you very much, and I'm going to make a few comments and then ask county attorney to, and I don't know if it's going to be Chip or Mary Helen, but make some comments and talk about the issue, but for those who don't follow the process, today is simply to instruct the county attorney to draft an ordinance that requires four votes. That would come back after public hearings for a discussion and votes to place it on the ballot, that would require five votes. And then it would go to the ballot in November for the public to weigh in, and that would, current would require 50% plus one. So there are some challenges and some questions around the state, and I would like to address that first, and then I'll talk about my motivation and why I have made the decision to bring this forward, which is certainly not necessarily comfortable for me, but it's a discussion that needs to take place. And with that, Mr. Fletcher.
Thank you, just briefly, we thought it was important for the, the board to know that in Orange County, they enacted a charter change that did a couple different things, one of which was to make the constitutional officers nonpartisan. In that instance, and in this instance, that's the sheriff, the supervisor of elections, tax collector, property appraiser, and clerk of courts. In Orange County, they've got another one as well. And that's been the subject of litigation for a number of years now. In late December, a decision came out of the Fifth District Court of Appeal, finding that, that, that that action was preempted by the state legislature under the state constitution, and that is now pending appeal to the State Supreme Court. Those decisions are not binding on us, they could be persuasive should it be litigated here, but they're not binding, so we don't see any reason the board couldn't move forward, but we just thought it was important that everybody understand there's some litigation risk with this, with this approach.
Okay, Commissioner Higginbotham?
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Again, as I said, this was not an easy decision for me to, to make, but times are changing. The perception of the public is changing. Some 20 years ago, 20-plus years ago, myself and a couple friends of mine that I see in here, Dee and Betty, and I don't know that Betty was part of that group, we got together and said, we want to form a group that will sway the county center of constitutionals, the county commission, and legislative delegation from Democrat to Republican. And over the 20 years now, 12 of which I've served on the commission, I've never thought, never was a plan of mine, and Dee would, would, I'm sure, agree with this, that I was ever going to run for public office, last thing that I wanted to do. But serving now on the commission has helped me grow, mold decisions, changed some decisions in direction. But what I've seen, to me, is alarming, and I think that many of you will share this, is the discourse that takes place in the public arena, the distrust between the two parties, and where this is a, is a small gesture, a small step towards trying to accomplish more voter confidence with, in public confidence with the elected officials. But what I've seen in many, in many aspects that we, public officials have focused on what divides us, they don't focus on what's uniting us, they focus on the sensation. I feel very proud of our constitutional officers. I think they've done a great job, but the times are changing. The perception, because we have a party affiliation, is a concern of mine, and that's why I've stepped into this uncomfortable arena as a former party chairman, as an advocate and a crusader, excuse me, that I would come forward with this action and ask for the board to make a motion here in just a few minutes, or I'll make a motion, and hopefully we'll have the support, but the discourse, as I said, was a concern. When we look at registration and the trends, the public is, is speaking, and they're speaking loudly about how they feel about both parties. The change in the sway, which was of most significance from 2008 to 2018, are you listening? Those who do not identify with either party grew by 86%, makes up one-third, board members, of the voting population here in Hillsborough County. Under the current guidelines, they are not permitted, as you know, to vote in the primary. Hopefully, this will open that door to those who are taxed without representation. We know, we heard mentioned today that the sheriff's budget is in excess of $400 million. We can go back through history here, and we see that many of these constitutional officers are decided, the elections are decided in a primary. We speak with disdain of the closed primary, where a writing candidate will come to, to lock these people out, to not have the primary decide the election and move on to a general. But it bothers me that we have excluded, by default, this growing number of people who have said they've had enough with partisan politics, they've had enough with the bickering, they don't like what they see in Washington, they don't like what they see in government in general. I look at this simply as a decision from the heart, not political, because it hurts actually the, the party that I'm a member of, I think, more than anything, because it invites people to look beyond the label, to look at the woman, to look at the man who is seeking their confidence through a vote. It looks at them and says, you're electing me to an office which is of transactional nature, that doesn't diminish what they do, but you don't go into a bank and wonder what is the, the political affiliation with a bank, or to the grocery store, or to the gas station. I don't think it should be any different, as this public is swaying and they're making decisions on leaving party affiliation. I know that there's going to be a sway in opinion of what is a tax collector, is a property appraiser, or the sheriff? Is there going to be a partisan sway and leaning when they execute the duties of their office? This, again, board members, is simply a gesture, a small step, not simply, but a gesture and a small step, to work at restoring voters, restoring the public's confidence in what is a changing trend here, not only in Hillsborough County, but throughout the community. With that, I will make a motion to instruct the county attorney to draft an ordinance... to instruct the county attorney to draft an ordinance, to bring back an ordinance for this board to consider, to send for a ballot after public hearings.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Higginbotham to draft an ordinance for item F2. Is there a second? I'll pass the gavel and second for discussion. And I, since I'm just the second, I can still keep going. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm not gonna be able to support the motion on the floor, and I hope that I can articulate why. I'll just start by, by just presenting an observation, and this is nothing more than an observation on my part, but it's noteworthy that we had both Democratic and Republican leaders here during public comment, expressing that they have concerns about this proposal. Commissioner Higginbotham, I wholeheartedly agree with you about the issue of uncivil discourse in government, but, but where I diverge is that I believe that, that discourse in government is healthy. However, it should be civil, but as much as we'd like to regulate civility, unfortunately, we just cannot do that. It's, it's up to the individual to be civil. I think Ms. James that spoke during public comment brings up a great point, that, you know, the primaries, you know, do tend, tend to bring out the more informed voters that are, that really have their thumb on the pulse of what's going on politically, especially at the local level. That's especially true, you know. Although the five constitutional officers, you know, are elected countywide and certainly deserve a high level of respect and their own right for that, you know, they're still really, you know, down-the-ballot offices. And, and, you know, you really wanna look to an electorate that's, that's plugged in and really paying attention to what's going on, the local scene. And I'll just close by just noting what, what our attorney had to say about the Orange County case. I know he did not say that we can't do it because of that, but, but I still have concerns about, you know, the fact that we might not be on, on sound legal footing if we move forward with this. So, so for that sampling of reasons, I'm not gonna be able to support the motion on the floor.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to first of all thank Commissioner Higginbotham for bringing this forward. I think he made several excellent comments that I agree with, particularly with respect to the fact that the political discourse has certainly become more hostile, defamatory, and malicious in my time in office. I'm not really approaching this issue from that perspective, but I think that's, that's most certainly the case. I've always questioned why our constitutional officers run on a partisan ticket. I felt that way when I was the first elected, and we had a Democrat-controlled county commission, and Republicans held majority of the constitutional offices. And I feel that way now, when we have a Republican-controlled board and Democrats control more of the constitutional offices. I know the respective party leaders like to highlight which officers are held by their party, but in my experience, this has been more symbolic than anything else. I do not understand the relevance of a partisan tax collector, sheriff, and I certainly do not want a partisan election supervisor. So, for all those reasons, I'm gonna support moving forward, at least getting the additional information, getting a draft ordinance, and, you know, we'll see where it goes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Higginbotham, you're recognized. And actually, since this is your item, if you have comments after, or questions after the speakers, just call my attention.
Okay, thank you.
I'll recognize you.
Commissioner White, in reflecting on what one of the speakers said this morning, that primaries tend to bring out more informed voters, with going nonpartisan, you have an additional 250,000 people, and I'm rounding, 243,000, who will be eligible to vote. And of that, they're not gonna all vote, but the more informed ones of that group will be turning out. So, I think that that's important to note. And on parties, I didn't mention this, there is a financial interest in this not going forward with the parties. As a former party chairman, you know, we always looked with open hands, improperly so, at the filing fees are collected. This, as I understand now, will eliminate going nonpartisan. They won't collect filing fees on the constitutional officers, and that'll be a significant amount of money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. The speakers this morning, I know Commissioner Higginbotham said that the public is speaking loudly, but I have never heard any member of the public speak about this issue, or having a concern about it, really. As Ms. Williams said, we've had six constitutional reviews, or charter review, and we've had our charter review as part of our charter since, six times, since, and the last time, 2015. And those processes have been so long that honestly, as a member of the public, I've wondered about if we're just constantly reviewing our charter almost. I don't see any reason that we, in between this serious review and discussion of the charter, that we should be doing this now. I think that this is just messy and confusing. I think it will be, create confusion for voters. People are confused about the way that the judicial votes work. It's gonna have multiple people on the primary ballot. People have difficulty, they're gonna be, you know, looking at a much more difficult process. We also know that the voters that aren't registered, and, and not as many nonpartisan voters, that hasn't been as big a movement here in Hillsborough County at all over the years. But we know that our primaries attract far, far fewer voters. So, we will have far, far fewer voters making these decisions. And the most low-information voters, according to studies, the people who, who have the least information and are the most unreliable voters are, are the ones that are the non-party voters. And I, again, I don't hear a clamor for this. We have our charter review process every five years. They spend a year reviewing it. I just don't see why we can't wait till the next round in 2020 and really consider this and, and anything else. I'm concerned that there's no significant public support for this change. I've only heard from those who are, who dislike the idea of this. I'm also concerned about the litigation. I, we have the, as, as our attorney has said, the Circuit Court struck down a plan to eliminate partisan elections of constitutional officers in Orange County. The Fifth DCA of Appeal upheld that decision in a written opinion. And we don't know yet whether the Florida Supreme Court will take it up. And I, again, why would we be doing this when we have this kind of status? No matter how it goes, why wouldn't we just wait until that issue's resolved? Why would we also enter into this litigious issue right now? So, I'm a no vote on this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Higginbotham, you're recognized.
Thank you. And the reason the charter review handles it is that it's an uncomfortable subject. As a party leader, it's not a popular move on my part. If I was up, was not retiring at the end of the year, I'd still do this, because I believe it's the right thing to do. And I may have misunderstood you, Commissioner Kemp, but if, there is a big movement with people consciously going independent. In the last 10 years, that has increased by 86%. That's, over a quarter, or right at a quarter million people who have made that conscious decision. If we're concerned about low voter turnout, the voter turnout will increase if more people have that opportunity. I don't discount people who are non-party affiliates as not having as much credibility or ability to make decisions. In fact, a reason I'm doing that is because of the respect that I have for them. I respect your no vote. The attorneys discussed the litigation and do not see a reason why this will, would keep us from moving forward and being successful. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to, you know, I have spoken with Dee Williams and Betty James, actually in my office, and I understand, I would like to hear from more people. Vote to move this forward today is not vote to approve the item, it's to get more information. And I think that that's critically important at this juncture, because, you know, like I said, when he put it on the agenda, I mean, there's relatively short period of time for people to become aware of it. And I think that this is a big issue, and the public should weigh in on it. So, and I, Commissioner Hagan's comments were definitely well-taken on this issue. So, seeing no further discussion, please record your vote. Oh, no, there is a motion on the floor by, oh, yes, that's right. I'm sorry. I second it.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Seeing no more discussion, the clerk will open the board, and we will vote.
Motion failed, three to four. Commissioners Chris, Kemp, Miller, and White voted no.
Thank you, board members.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Merrill?
That takes us to 11:00 AM time certain, which is F4, Commissioner Miller's item.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Well, I probably know how this is gonna go also. However, I have been one that always believed that amending our constitution should not be a readily-available, easy thing to do, whether it's the Constitution, United States Constitution, say, the Florida, or our charter. Our Charter Review Board meets every five years. They met in 2015. I had an issue at that Charter Review Board dealing with the makeup of the county commission, trying to take it from five, take it to five same-sex districts and two at large. The Charter Review within its wisdom decided they didn't wanna do that, and I live with it. That's the way it goes. I see now that there's gonna be attempts before the Charter Review Commission meets in 2020 to look at changing our charter. So, simply put, I would, I looked at the state of Florida's constitution amendment process, and it requires a 60% of the votes that are, to pass anything to be added to the charter, it has to be 60%, except for citizen initiatives, does not have to be. I don't know if that's true or not. Maybe it's not. I'm not sure, okay. But having said that, I'm just gonna put it forth out there. I feel that if that's the case, and Florida should be the case in this county. So, I came forth with this charter change to basically say, and my motion will be, to direct the county attorney's office, and I'm gonna change it a little bit, to direct the county attorney's office to bring back a draft ordinance proposing to amend Section 8.04 of the Hillsborough County Charter, to require the charter amendments will become effective upon approval by a 60% vote of the electorate, except for citizen petition initiatives that remain at 50%. And that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Miller. Do we have a second?
A second, Dee.
Second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I had initially missed the piece about the citizen-led initiatives. What's the rationale behind having that threshold set below 60%?
Well, the, the citizens have already, will have a certain number, they have to go out and require those petitions. And to me, that gives significant value that the citizens understand and know that they're putting forth the votes, putting forth their names, putting on that initiative, that we may not have to have, we don't need to have a 60% threshold for the pass there. So, that's why I said have a citizen initiative remain at 50%.
Okay, and that, that gives me pause, because I, I think about this, this pregnant pig amendment in the, the state constitution. I would, well, first, let me ask a question of the county attorney's office, because that's why I initially had hit, hit my request to speak button. Before I heard the piece about the citizen-led initiatives, I was inclined to support the concept, but I think it would be appropriate to have that charter amendment pass with at least 60% of the vote. Is there a way for the board to accomplish that?
I would have to defer to Mary Helen, Mary Helen on that item.
Mary Helen Ferris for the county attorney's office. I briefly looked into the issue, and the charter says a majority. So, if this were to pass by 57%, and we say, if we take that position, that it did not pass, I think it could be challenged.
And how ironic would that be for a ballot initiative that, that says that we're gonna require 60% vote to amend the charter, to have it pass with, with some number between 50 and 60%? That, that's, that would just be a, kind of a strange irony. Okay, I, I'm gonna make a motion to, to amend, to just require that any initiative to amend the county charter require 60% vote.
Okay, we have amendment on the floor by Commissioner White. Do we have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Chris. We'll just, Commissioner Kemp, do you wanna speak to the amendment, or the?
Maybe I'll wait till after that amendment's considered.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioners Hagan, Kemp, Miller, voted no.
Okay, we are now on the motion as amended. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Well, my concern was this, and I'll express it after that vote, but, so I don't know where it plays in this, but our charter is like our constitution. I can see a higher standard for that, of 60%. Anything else, I don't see that we should have a higher standard for. So, that if we're amending our charter, I'd like to see the 60% otherwise. And, and that speaks to a broader category than citizens' initiatives. It speaks to others, other, more generated referendums that do not, that do not change our charter.
Okay?
Chip, or, excuse me.
Oh, you're asking.
Yeah, maybe we could have you speak to that category, just so.
So, I'm not.
It's clarified?
Entirely sure I'm understanding the question. However, what I can say is that the motion before you is only related to the portion of the county charter that relates to amending the charter. So, it would not affect any other referendum that could go before the voters.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
So, a regular referendum would not require 60%?
Well, so there's really only kind of three ways we end up with the, with the referendum. One is charter revision, which is what we're talking about here. One is if the state legislature has authorized a referendum, and so that might be for certain taxes. It might be, well, or under the state constitution, for a debt-backed-by-property tax. So, those would all be whatever standard is in those, those, those underlying legal authorities, the statute or the constitution. The third one would be a straw poll, which is an unbinding referendum that the board can put out, in which case it's, it's nonbinding in pretty free form, and it could be whatever you want. But the ones we're dealing with today are just, before you right now, at least in this motion, is just the charter amendments. The other ones would be subject to whatever statute that they're, they're under.
Okay, very good. Is that clear, I think, with everybody? Okay. Commissioner Kemp, are you finished?
Yes, I'm finished.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Miller, do you have any other comments?
Nope, I think it's perfectly clear.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Kemp, item F4. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
And again, I just, we only need, I should've said this beginning, we only need four votes for each of these items to proceed to the next step, but when they come back, the actual ordinance will need five votes, just to let you all know. Okay, Mr. Merrill?
Your 11:15, excuse me, time certain, F7, Commissioner Kemp's item. I guess technically it's not quite 11:15. I don't know if you need to waive the rules, but we're two minutes late.
It's 11:14 and a half.
Close enough.
I think we're close. I think we're close. I'll try to make. Thank you.
I'll try and make small talk till 11:15. As I had stated when we started, I don't believe this is appropriate time or the best process to amend our county charter. However, we have had this discussion, this was put before us, and while we're doing that, I thought we should at least consider and issue, what I've heard great public interest about over and over again out in the public are term limits on our county commission. Effectively, we don't have term limits on the commission. I, along with many people, believe that although this is permitted at the present, the situation is inconsistent with the spirit of the charter, with the belief that most people have, and it seems to be clamoring out in the public that most people don't believe that the charter should, should allow for this. So, I'm gonna make a motion to direct the county attorney's office to bring back a draft ordinance proposing to amend the Hillsborough County Charter to require that county commission terms are limited to no more than 10 consecutive years of service.
Second.
There is a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner White on item F7. Commissioner Hagan Botham, you're recognized.
If I could ask the maker of the motion, how did you come up with the 10 years? And when would this be implemented?
Well, I think we could get recommendations from the county attorney's office about how it's implemented.
Did you put any thought into it, or is it, how did you come up with 10 years?
10 years was because when they do redistricting, you can get the extra two years. So, that's why I did that.
All right. That's, that's what I wanted to make sure was in consideration. And what about time of implementing?
I thought that that could be best brought forward when, you know, with recommendations by the county attorney's office of how that would ever, about how that would be implemented.
And if I could ask the county attorney, how do you implement this?
So, I don't know, excuse me, I don't know that we've spent significant time on it. Mary Helen, would you, would you like to speak to that?
To make the 2018 ballot, we would have to have the ordinance approved supervisor probably like early August, maybe even a little bit before. So, we have time to go through the process. And then it would be approved starting '18. I'd have to do some research into how to, how it would affect existing commissioners going forward. But we could, we could look into that and bring that back.
No other questions?
Okay.
Wait, so if it did affect one, would we remove the commissioner from office?
We'd have to look into that. I, we, and again, I haven't had the chance to research this, but we wouldn't implement a term limit and then cut somebody's term short.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Making my remarks brief, I'm just gonna echo all of Commissioner Kemp's comments she stated in her opposition to Commissioner Hagan Botham's item regarding nonpartisan constitutional officers, things like, don't know why we're doing this now, charter review coming up, and all of her other comments she used in opposition to that item.
Okay. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. You know, this, this is one that you have to just look at through the lens of being good public policy. So, you know, with, with, with trying to set any issues aside of, you know, where myself or any of my colleagues may stand on this, I will say, or should I say where we would stand should this pass, I will say that, you know, this, this is an easy vote if it's not going to apply to any member of the current board. So, I do believe wholeheartedly that years served by sitting commissioners at this time should count towards, towards this term limit, this proposed term limit. I will say, though, at the same time, that, that I can recognize the experience, the difference in experience, I should say, between serving in a single-member district versus serving countywide. I would liken it to serving in a lower house versus an upper house. So, what, what I'd like to do is, is make a motion to amend, to ask staff to, to number one, formulate the language such that years served by current commissioners, you know, are counted towards the term limit, and to also contemplate the concept of serving in a single-member district versus a countywide district and, you know, to see if, but, but still set a total number of years that can be served by a commissioner.
Has everybody got that? Okay, so there, you're, you have an amendment?
Mm-hmm.
And is there a second to his amendment? His amendment dies for lack of a second. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Well, the comment I was gonna make, or the question, and I guess I probably don't need to now since it failed, but it's my understanding that most of these ordinances, when they've gone into effect, essentially starts the clock anew. Is that accurate?
What we've looked at so far tends to be drafted that way going forward, so that it would be from the date of enactment going forward. What, the reason that Mary Helen didn't raise that issue was we haven't researched it enough to know if that's a legal requirement or if that's just a common practice. But based on the board's vote, we'll look at what the common practices and make a recommendation that presumably would be counting going forward from the date of enactment, not applying it at the next qualifying date based on years served, which is the way I would've interpreted the motion if it had passed.
Okay. Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
Having experience in dealing with these kind of issues at the state level and having watched challenges, they cannot be retroactive. They have to be prospective. So, when this would become law, then the clock starts at that point moving forward.
We, I understand that that's the direction of the board. We haven't done the research, so, but I understand that's.
Direction or not, you're gonna find that that's the constitutional requirement. I've already been down this, this rodeo before. So, I know that that's what you're going to find.
Commissioner Hagan Botham, you're recognized.
So, if this were to pass, then moving forward, anyone would be eligible for another set of 10 years?
Yes, sir.
With the ballot, I think this is kind of directed towards Ken, which makes me feel uncomfortable. But do we just add your name on there? So, anyway, I'm not comfortable with it at this point. I'd like some more information to be brought back before I'm gonna, you know, I see the value in term limits, I've imposed them on myself. In fairness, you know, it takes, and maybe I'm a slow learner and not as smart as the rest of you, but it took a good year to get a feel for the process and the operations, how staff works, and who on staff is gonna tell you what they think you want to hear versus those who, you know, come in with balls and strikes. And I'm more comfortable at a level of 12 years, and again, that's because I've imposed that on myself. But I'd like more information on this before I make a decision.
So, what would you like to do? You want more information?
Well, to the maker of the motion, would you ask for a staff report to come back before we make a final vote? So that you want, and I don't, I'm not counting your votes, I don't know, but maybe get more information before I make a vote on it.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Okay. Maybe we could have a staff report that brought back to the next meeting, that would look at, I think, all the possibilities, 10 years, the 18, I guess it would be 18 years, that, or 12 years, and the perspective and, I would think that the, as Commissioner Chris said, that it would be, that time served would count against you, but no one would be, you know, removed from office, or they would serve out whatever terms they had. But, but I would, if we could have that reported back at the next board meeting, clarified, is that possible?
Yes, I'm looking at Mary Helen. She thinks she can get that done, and we can, we can look at what's done in other local governments where you've got multiple districts, and then the different timeframes that you mentioned, and the limitations on the effective date or the prospectiveness of the, of the limitation. But the drafting, as we've heard today, will be to have a perspective in terms of how it's, it's drafted, but we will do the research on what the, the legal options of the commission are.
I'll agree to that, to have it brought back to me.
Okay, so, you're going to take away your original motion?
And I'll have this, we can agenda this for a report and some motions at that time.
Okay. And then, so you need to, you're making a new motion, and that motion needs a second. She's, well, she just.
I'll withdraw my motion at this time.
She already said that. Okay, so, the second, Commissioner White, are you still gonna second her motion?
I've, I've gotta hear the motion.
Okay. It's gone from an ordinance to a staff report at the next meeting.
A staff report, including what?
With very, various possibilities, the 10-year term limit, an 18-year term limit, and information about how it would affect current terms.
We have a second by Commissioner Miller. Okay, so I've been quiet on this, and I, I really think the best remedy to term limits is to move to district seats. Commissioner Miller, you have brought this forward before, because if you're in a district, you can't move around, and you are limited by term limits to your district. So, I, and I want to tell you that my instinct has told me that there are law minority groups out there, we now have almost a million people in unincorporated Hillsborough County, who really have the potential of being disenfranchised in the, by the current system. I think a split to a seven or nine single-member districts is worth having staff look at, given the great diversity and population of our community. Each commissioner would represent fewer constituents, government would be closer to the people, and we can respond quickly. I believe our county has gotten so big, and county, too big for a district, and really for countywide commissioners. Our projected population in 2030 of 1.8 million people really has kind of been sort of the driver for me in, in deciding to bring this forward. I would like to make an amendment to the motion. I, you know, because I can bring this up under future issues and have a staff report come back, but I'd like to make an amendment to the motion that, that staff also include in the report a makeup of a seven or nine, include seven and nine single-member districts as part of the overall review and report that's being offered. I want to tell you all, all of the other major counties, Miami-Dade, Broward, Orange, Deval, Palm Beach, have no countywide commissioners. We're the third-largest county and the third-largest state in the nation. You know, as far as drawing the lines, I think that would be down the road after the voters decide what they would do, because I think there would have to be extensive community and neighborhood meetings. But I just, I, I, you know, I look at the workload in my office, and it's, it's just to a point where my staff actually could be sitting there seven days a week doing constituent work, and I applaud them for all the work they do get done. But I do believe this is fair to the citizens and responsive to the citizens of what they would like to see and what they deserve, and so fair. So, it's just, it'd be a staff report, and we can decide when it comes back. So, that is my amendment to the motion.
Okay, we have four speakers in the queue.
Well, I have to have a second.
All right, we're looking for a second. Is there a second? Commissioner Hagan, you're leading forward. Are you seconding this?
I'm not gonna second this. I'd, I would support another motion, but not an amendment, because I don't support the original motion.
Okay. Seeing no second, it dies without a second. We have four people in the queue to speak. Commissioner Miller?
Well, actually, I guess I can give this back to you, Commissioner Murman.
Yeah, yeah, there's no amendment, but I'm, I mean, I'm just gonna be honest with you, in future issues, I'm gonna ask staff to bring back a report. So, one way or the other, I think we need to discuss it at this board, because there is, I believe, a serious representation issue in a county right now that has almost 1.4 million people in it. So, Commissioner Miller?
You know, I'm a little concerned, Commissioner Murman, why you didn't bring this up as an agenda item, it's a monumental issue that's been going on for a while. Why you waited to bring it up as an amendment to Commissioner Kemp's motion? That's, that's a concern that I have. I feel there should've been, and it's a separate agenda item within itself. Number two, why is all of a sudden there's a change of your opinion when I brought this up twice to talk about the changing of this, of this commission, including going from five to two, five same member districts to two at large, and we even had a discussion of going to seven to nine commissioners? That was not a flavor for it at that particular point in time. Now, there's a flavor from you that say that we need to have seven to nine same member districts. I'm a little concerned as to what was a change of heart at this particular point in time compared to where it was two, three, four, five years ago when I brought it forth. But my major concern is you didn't bring this monumental issue up until it's as an amendment. You brought it up, you should, I don't understand why it wasn't on the agenda itself.
I, actually, I was gonna put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and since we're all discussing these changes today, I just decided to go ahead and bring it up today. I mean, there's no, I mean, I'm gonna ask for a staff report, and I'll put it on the agenda next meeting like I originally planned. There was no, but since we're in the discussion of term limits and Commissioner Kemp's item was put on at the, as an off the agenda, you know, I, I thought, what, if we're gonna discuss term limits, this is a perfect time. I mean, single-member districts is term limits, absolutely. And, you know, why did I change my mind? Because we have gotten very, very big.
We were, we were about the same size two to four, five years ago, Commissioner Murman.
No, I don't think so. Absolutely not. I think, I'm looking at the amount of constituent work, I'm looking at the, I'm looking to the future, too. I'm not just, it's not just for today. I'm looking at the future of where are we gonna go down the road? At some point, this is gonna become almost a necessity, not something that, you know, we're, it's, that we're gonna be able to just bring up and have a discussion on. I, I believe, I have changed, and yes, my feelings have evolved on this issue. I think the representation of constituents needs to be more fair, and I think our districts need to be smaller to have that representation. And it's, there's no other, that's, that's, it's population, it's diversity, it's everything. And it's something that's, I, I believe is very important to me. I don't know how much. I don't know how much, you know, when this, these items will come back, the term limits, but when I saw her item on the term limits and it's, you know, I think Saturday or Sunday, I thought, you know, better solution, term limits, is to move to districts, more districts.
Well, Mr. Shaw, stay on the floor. Your amendment, your amendment died. And I, I know where this all started from, I got the phone call from Andy Panacini myself concerning going to nine single-member districts, which I told him I could agree with, but when we had, the real problem was when I said I would suggest that the lines be drawn by the planning commission and not by the county commission. And he basically told me that was not going to happen because he felt that we would have seven districts of the nine that are Republican-controlled and two by Democrats. And I told him, and I was born at night, but I wasn't born last night. So be ever mindful when we bring this forth as a future item, I'm going to ask that we look at having it where the lines are drawn by the planning commission. But it never ceases, it, it amazes me that I brought this up, I know, two times, am I correct? Twice.
Twice, you have.
Twice.
I know, I went back to my file.
And it went down the tubes twice. And now all of a sudden, it's coming back as, well, the county's gotten too big and we need to have same, the county was the same size then as it was when I was talking about it before. I just hope, I just hope this is not politically driven.
No.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely not. And I looked at the other major counties in our state.
So, Mr. Merman, I brought that forth when, when I had my debate. I brought that forth at that particular point in time.
I understand, I'm just saying, I mean, people's feelings can evolve over time, but my, my staff is very, very busy and I just, I think that we're trying to serve as many citizens and be as responsive as we can to these citizens. And whether it's minority or populations or whatever, you know, it's, it, you know, and I hope you will support it because I, I'm sorry I didn't support it back then. Actually, looking forward to the future and all these community, all these presentations we've had on population projections and everything, you know, you start to look forward and you say, this isn't going to work for us anymore.
I, I will support it. And let me back up. When I brought this forth before, I told you that Miami-Dade had 13 county commissioners, all of them were same-member districts. Broward has nine, if I'm not, if I remember from the top of my head, Broward has nine commissioners, all same-member districts. Palm Beach has, Palm Beach has same-member districts.
Right.
I will support this, going forward with seven to nine, only if the planning commission draws the lines, only if the planning commission draws the line.
But do you think that actually needs to be in the-
Yes, I do.
Going forward?
Yes, I do, yes.
Even without public input decided and all that?
Well, I mean, to be fair and have equitable lines drawn, it should not be drawn by this planet, by this board. You in Tallahassee, you know how it went with reapportionment? It was to the point that in Miami-Dade County, they drew a line and drew a sitting house member out of her district by one block, one block because a certain party wanted to take control, and they drew that member out of her district by one block. If, if the city council can do it, they're here and they don't have the, they don't have the problems that we have in drawing it. And we were here last time when we did this reapportionment of this, of this body, it was a zoo. We don't need to have that again. It would be more fair and equitable and the public, I think, would make, would feel that it's more transparent if a non-political body draws the lines, and that being the planning commission staff, not the planning commissioners, the planning commission's staff. That's the only way I could support it.
Well, I want to make sure the public drives this the only way. So let's, we'll discuss it when it comes to that.
Well, if we're going to put on the ballot, the public will have an understanding what's going to be because we have to take it back to public hearing anyway. So I think that we put it out there, it's drawn by the planning commission and let the public decide. They don't want to draw it by the planning commission, they'll, they'll shoot it down. But it'd be fair and equitable and have transparency and not politically-driven initiatives, which I think this might be politically-driven from what I, phone calls I've received, it needs to be drawn by the planning commission staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Crist, you're recognized.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want to climb into the politically-driven fight because one could pitch that argument on the term limits, since the county voter registration is growing Democrat, let's get the Republicans out now so we can have a vote. But I'm not going to go there. What I want to focus on is for the first 13 years before I was in politics in Hillsborough County, I was a very active civic activist. And I got to tell you, from a consumer, from a voter, from a community perspective, this is the best process in the state. Because every single neighborhood, every single civic group, every single organization out there has control or possibility to access the control of four voting members of the board. And that means everybody's got a running chance to get a victory for their issue. Because with your single-member district as your champion, you can work to get them on your side, but with the other three single-member districts representatives out there, they could care less about your neighborhood or your issue in your neighborhood because it's not in their district. So that gives you three countywide commissioners to lobby to hopefully get on board with what's important to your neighborhood. And it gives every neighborhood, whether it be West Tampa, East Tampa, South Tampa, or New Tampa, it gives every one of those neighborhoods four votes on this board to possibly support what they need and want for their neighborhood. Now, let's talk about it from a minority standpoint. Right now, we have pretty well-defined Hispanic and Black communities and now even Asian and Middle Eastern communities in Hillsborough County, where the bulk of the population is identified with a single-member district. Commissioner Miller, the bulk of the Black population lives in your district, the bulk of the Middle Eastern and Asian population lives in my district, the bulk of the Hispanic population is probably still in your district. And, you know, Commissioner White and Commissioner Merman, the bulk of your districts are predominantly white.
No.
No? You have a pretty large Hispanic in yours. But either way, for these groups to be able to have the loudest voice possible and the strongest vote on this board possible to get their agendas through, they need their countywide commissioners. Because that will give them four votes. We do away, or we alter the process that we have in place in any way, shape, or form, if we alter it, we need to keep in mind that there needs to be that access for the public to be able to have a majority vote for their issue. So if we add one more single-member district, we need to add another countywide district. Because we've got to keep that ratio the way that it is right now to have that balance so that groups and organizations and civic groups and neighborhoods can still have a running chance of getting their agendas through. Merely saying, oh, well, Miami does it this way, well, you know, Miami also gives a million dollars to each one of their board members to spend indiscretionately on their districts. Are we going to vote that next? You know, there are other boards that also get budgets for their office and they can make adjustments on what was their salaries based on what they pay their staff. Are we going to do that too? I, I don't think so. So, you know, what is policy somewhere else may not be good policy. And what we have right now, whether it's unique or not, it works and it works well. If the issue is limiting people's terms on this board, then let's isolate it to that issue. You know, from my perspective, I've seen both processes here and both processes in Tallahassee. And frankly, I don't like what has happened in Tallahassee. It has become very partisan, it has become very staff-driven, it has become very lobbyist-controlled because the elected officials who were there long enough to have the juice, to be powerful, to have the knowledge and the know-how to be combative are gone. And, you know, I think that there is a delicate balance that needs to be struck. Serving eight years in a single-member district and then being able to serve in a countywide district allows this board to maintain at least a certain balance of institutional knowledge and juice to get the heavy lifting and, and bigger projects done. Case in point, Commissioner Hagan. You've been working on this baseball thing for over eight years. If you couldn't return, what would happen with it? A freshman pick up the mantle who has little to no experience and knowledge and, and juice to be able to do something like this? Could they get it done? I don't think so. So, you know, what do we do? Shut it down just because we have an arbitrary number in place? Being able to have a lower chamber and an upper chamber on this board is critically important to the dynamic of being able to be effective and not allowing to special interest groups, the lobbyists or the staff, to take control. And those of us who are newer on the board rely more heavily on outside advice and more heavily on staff than the senior members do that are here. So I, I'm quite okay with the process the way it is. I would be open to limiting overall terms on the board to maybe eight years at a single member and eight years at a countywide, and then you're gone. But to just arbitrarily throw numbers out there because somebody else happens to haphazardly do it is not logical.
Well, Commissioner Crist, I would just tell you respectfully, totally disagree. Four votes, you're saying every, that was something that somebody said 25 years ago and we have changed a lot since then. So I'm saying that I am fully respecting our population increase, our minority group increases, and the diversity of this community to help us move forward into the next decade that we're about to have a huge population explosion in. And if it was just four votes, then our web mails would only have four names in it. They always have all seven. So it's just, you know, I don't, I agree with anything you said. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Yeah, I'm going to be quick, just again, I oppose the original motion on the floor. I did not second Commissioner Merman's amendment because of my opposition to the original motion, but should there be a, a substitute motion or when it comes back, I'll support getting additional information.
Okay, Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
First of all, I, I am taken aback, I know that you've explained it, but that this wasn't on the agenda, that we, that it was raised now. And in relation to the, the term limits too. I actually agree with nearly everything that you said, Commissioner Crist. I, I would totally agree in so many ways. I am taken aback, we, we, as, as was brought up by speakers this morning and has been raised here several times, we have a way to review our charter. We do it every five years. We spend a year doing it, we engage the public at that time, we have in-depth and long conversations about it, as we should, I believe. To bring something like this, I'm taken aback that something so fundamental and so profound about the way that we govern, Hillsborough County is now being raised on the fly to consider with, with so little. I think it's surprising that at a time when we're talking about the importance of thinking regionally, that we would do away with the countywide representatives on our own board. If we can't think of it as a county, how can we really even be talking about a region? I think our current structure, a model that is shared by Pinellas County, strikes a good balance, four commissioners with three countywide. I am very familiar too with Miami and Broward and Palm Beach and Orange County, and they are very, very different in, from us in many ways. One being that all of those counties have many, many more municipalities, anywhere from 24 to 30 municipalities that do all their land use, that handle all their local, so that the, the, all their local needs, so that the duty of the county commissioners is a very different, of a very different kind. Also, something that is extremely different than all of those counties is that they all have county executives that are list, that are elected countywide. And, you know, we're not, so we're talking about an entire redo of the structure of our county and governing on the fly here without really any of the consideration that we should be making. At present, I think it's very, very important in core and central that at present, any voter in Hillsborough County can, is represented by a majority of the board. And that any voter knows that he or she has the opportunity to vote for elected officials sitting in those positions and will again in the future. Cutting back to only one representative would greatly diminish the voice of any individual constituent in this county and take away the countywide perspective that we need to make difficult decisions about transportation, about land use, about all the things that we talk about. I don't support this approach, we'll vote against it moving forward. And another thing that you can say about countywide districts are, they are impossible to draw for the benefit of any particular candidate or party, they're countywide. And I do, I do think we do have almost like a bicameral county commission structure and, which is what Commissioner White recognized and what has been raised, where if you're in the district, then you can move to the countywide now. I know I had been suggesting the term limits, but I would be supportive of term limits that were, that allowed for moving from your district seat to your countywide seat and limiting it at that point. I'd also, if we wanted to do the bigger approach for the future, we could have five districts that are single-member districts and four that are county, or five that are countywide, I guess you have, four that are countywide, then you could have five representatives for any issue or idea that were accountable to you as a citizen. And I think this was a very, this was a long thought-out, long-considered charter that we have and it really is one of the best charters and one of the best ways to make decisions in the state of Florida. So I, I think it is something that we should preserve, I don't think it's something that we should be tinkering with on the fly like this without consideration. I think it would be, create a big mess to move forward with any consideration of this right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan Botham.
Thank you, and I apologize, I left when this debate started and I normally wouldn't comment on this, but I was having an allergic reaction to food I ate earlier and was in quest of Benadryl and thanks to Commissioner Kemp's office, I found the necessary meds and I'm back. Which may be a, a good thing or a bad thing. As I understand, I wanted, I hate to do this, to get caught up, there's a motion on the floor to go from seven to nine?
No, motion on the floor is to go with the 10-year, or to do a staff report, have staff come back next board meeting on the 10-year term limit and, and other options.
And I was hearing as I was waiting for my medication, but that there was some discussion about seven to nine, did that die?
I made an amendment to her motion to include a staff report on seven or nine single-member districts.
It's a staff report to come back with it?
It was a staff report, but it died.
Okay, all right. So I think I'm up to speed and I'm happy going from seven to nine if it gets us off the second floor because that end office I'm in is miserably noisy.
He wants off the second floor, it's too noisy.
Is that bay door down below?
I don't know what floor we would end up with. And countywides could be in the basement, who knows? Okay, Commissioner White, you're recognized. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to do a staff report and I'm just going to do mine in future issues and we'll have it on the agenda at the next meeting. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Let me ask a question of, of the, of the sponsor, but did you, what did you put in there as far as years?
Well, I originally, I decided, based on the conversation, that we could have multiple, I asked for multiple options, including the kind of 18-year to move from, you know, the 10-year and then the 18-year option, and I also wanted to know, you know, whether it would prospectively or affect what people have served.
Could we put in 12 years also?
Sure, I would.
But can I comment on that? If you go to 12 years, then that means somebody still has to jump to a countywide seat. I thought part of your reason was, is you go to stay put in either a district or a countywide, one or the other.
Here's what we can do, that would be something that could be brought back and we could discuss at that time, I think.
Just bring him back, just part of the options. Just bring him back, just part of the options.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, that's the motion on the floor for the staff report. Item F7 is not bringing a draft ordinance back, is a staff report. I see no further discussion, so please record your vote. Oh, Commissioner Hagan.
One question. It was my understanding through all the dialogue that any staff report would only include prospectively moving forward on the time, not, as Commissioner Chris said, going backwards.
You can't go back.
Okay.
You can only go forward.
I was going to make sure that's what we're voting on.
Absolutely. Okay. Everybody on the same page? Please record your vote.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Chris and Hagan voted no.
Okay, Mr. Merrill.
All right, that's the last of your time, certain, so we can clean up the rest of the regular agenda items, beginning with item B1, which is the interim employment agreement with Christine Beck.
Commissioners, thank you. This is a follow-up from the action last board meeting, requesting of appointing Christine Beck as county attorney with interim contract. This is the interim contract. It follows virtually the same format as my initial contract, but provides that the board has the authority to do a search during that period if the board so chooses to initiate, in which event, at the conclusion, if another person were to be selected, Ms. Beck could return back to her current position. It also sets a salary and a term of one year.
Okay, item B1. Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B1. Sorry, further discussion, seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, B2.
Procurement Services, we have B2 through B7.
Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Item B2 is asking the board to award four-year contracts to the four respective responsive and responsible bidders for ongoing and as-needed mowing and landscaping services at athletic fields, recreational parks, and boat ramps throughout the county. Sensible Property Care Incorporated, the amount of $2,104,695.60. Mendez All Services LLC, in the amount of $1,779,600. Cardinal Landscaping Services of Tampa Incorporated, in the amount of $1,505,400. And Marks Excavating, in the amount of $54,040. It's important to note that 11 of the 22 site zones are set aside for Hillsborough County Registered Small Business Enterprises, or SBEs. Three of the four recommended vendors are SBEs, covering 21 of the 22 sites, zones. And the total award amount for all zones is $5,443,735.60, and approximately 99% of the total is going to SBEs. With that, Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Okay, we're on item B2. Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Hagan-Botham to approve item B2. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Item B3 is asking the board to approve and execute two-year agreements with Campbell Engineering Incorporated, Aurora Civil Engineering Incorporated, Watermark Engineering Group Incorporated, Applied Sciences Consulting Incorporated, and Basley Engineering Solutions Incorporated for ongoing and as-needed professional civil engineering services for the real estate and facilities services department, in the amount of $500,000 each. The specified work was a set aside for Hillsborough County Registered Small Business Enterprises, or SBEs, and all six recommended firms are SBEs. Procurement Services recommends approval.
Okay, we're on item B3. Motion by Commissioner Hagan-Botham, seconded by Commissioner Miller to approve item B3. Sorry, further discussion, seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Item B4 is asking the board to award to the respective lowest responsive and responsible bidders for the purchase of 31 vehicles for fleet management and public utilities departments. Allen J. Ford Lincoln Mercury Incorporated, the amount of $1,145,274.18. Bozard Ford Company, in the amount of $31,686. And Jarrett Ford, excuse me, Jarrett Gordon Ford Incorporated, in the amount of $120,505. The Economic Development Department did not have three disadvantaged business enterprises or small business enterprise registered for the specified commodities, therefore no participation goal or set aside was established for the procurement. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Okay, on item B4. Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Hagan-Botham to approve item B4. Sorry, further discussion, seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Item B5 is asking the board to award and execute two-year, two-year agreements with the three lowest responsive and responsible bidders for ongoing and as-needed moderately complex construction renovation work at various facilities throughout the county. Kenyon and Partners Incorporated, the amount of $4.5 million. George G. Solar and Company Incorporated, which is a registered disadvantaged business and small business enterprise, in the amount of $3.5 million. And Commercial Interiors Incorporated, which is a registered disadvantaged business enterprise, in the amount of $2.5 million. A disadvantaged business enterprise goal of 10% was established for the work, and all three vendors have committed to achieving the goal. Procurement Services recommends approval.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Hagan-Botham to approve item B5. Sorry, further discussion, seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Item B6 is asking the board to award a three-year, excuse me, award three-year contracts for ongoing and as-needed building services inspector and plans examiner services to the four lowest responsive and responsible bidders. Joe Payne Incorporated, Nova Engineering and Environmental LLC, Bureau Veritas North America Incorporated, and Quorum Services LLC. The total estimated aggregate award amount for the term of the contract is $3,465,239.70. The Economic Development Department did not have three disadvantaged business enterprises or small business enterprises registered for the, for the very specialized services, therefore no participation goal or SBE set aside was established. Procurement Services recommends approval.
Okay, on item B6. Motion by Commissioner Hagan-Botham, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Prove item B6. Sorry, further discussion, seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Lastly, item B7 is asking the board to award and execute two-year agreements for ongoing and as-needed repairs and modifications to various pipelines and utility facilities throughout the county to the lowest responsive and responsible bidders. Kimmons Contracting Corporation, in the amount of $1,271,651.00. Carl Hankins Incorporated, in the amount of $1,372,924. A disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal of 3% was established for the work, and both vendors have committed to achieving the goal, and Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Okay, we're on item B7. Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Hagan to approve item B7. Sorry, further discussion, seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you, Scott. That just leaves one item, Commissioners, that's G1, Chip's report on the potential county attorney search process.
Thank you. Commissioners, as you'll recall, you asked that we report back on all options for a county attorney search process, and that's this document before you. It's a preliminary report that identifies potential lead county agencies, the options for search consultant if you chose to go in that direction, establishment of job qualifications and timeline information, as well as future steps in the event you wanted to initiate a search. At this point, unless the board has discussion, I think the only necessary motion would be to receive and file.
Okay, we have a motion, motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner White to receive and file. Item G1, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
And that just leaves future discussion items.
Okay, anybody else but me? I will again ask for a staff report on seven or nine single-member districts. And is there anybody else?
In that, on your staff report, specifically looking at the lines being drawn by the planning commission?
Okay.
Yes, I have something.
Okay, you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner Merman. My office has been receiving an extraordinary large number of complaints concerning trash and recycling pickup services in our district. Missed pickups, bad customer service, a variety of numerous excuses from the companies, if they even get an answer at all. I saw in the paper today that Hernando County is also having similar problems with a couple of their contracted haulers, and I also noticed that one of those contracted haulers is the predominant one that we also are having concerns with. So, it begins, beginning to look to me as if it may be just a bigger problem than just my one little district. And so, at this time, while I understand that at times, certain issues may cause delays in pickups, the volume of complaints and the lack of good customer service from some of our contracted haulers, not all of them, has directed me to make a motion at this time.
We don't do motions in future issues, you just have staff to bring you a report.
I'd like to go ahead and direct staff to bring back a report that identifies which consumers, that identifies the consumer complaints, what those complaints are, if there is a particular hauler that is receiving the majority of those complaints, why, you know, what is being done to rectify the problem, and how soon can we get it rectified?
So, you want us to look at the entire county, not just?
Yes, the entire county, not just my district.
Sure, yep, happy to do it.
We, I will say, we get a lot of calls about trash and recycling in my office, but I want to tell you, the customer service, Kim, does an awesome job. She is Johnny on the spot. You have a problem, she gets right on it immediately. So, I, I will say, you know, I do think that there are just some issues with some of the haulers, maybe their responsiveness to actor Kim gets on them. There's even a further problem of them responding to her, but she does an excellent job. On our side of the coin, I think the staff does a good deal. It's just getting the haulers to do what we want them to.
I'm glad you clarified that. My concern is not with our staff, it's with the staff of the haulers that the majority of the complaints are coming in from.
Well, thank you for that. Yes, Kim does a really good job. We do aggressively fine and penalize haulers, and so, just, you know, at a certain point, you know, we may have to reconsider those franchises, but at this point, we'll, we'll return a report that is comprehensive.
I think the contracts were like in the fifth year of seven, do you know?
I don't, I don't, I'll have to.
Or maybe fourth, something. Commissioner Hagan, do you have a comment?
I was going to point out that the issue that I've seen is, a lot of the complaints have been repetitive, same people, the same routes. So, that's the issue that I have, and I'm sure that's what Commissioner Chris is seeing as well.
There's one particular hauler that, not just our county's had trouble with, but another county, and we think they've improved, but that may be one we need to consider perhaps.
Look at the repetitive ones, really, with a closer microscope and see.
Okay, will do.
Absolutely.
We'll bring something back in the next meeting.
Okay, good board meeting. Thank you all, have a great day. We are adjourned.
The irony in this?